Sit down today. Doing okay?
If I can have everybody stand, I'm going to have Mr. Martin give the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes. How are you?
Good. Good.
These meetings.
I've been over.
This is.
You're. Thank you for your.
Oh, God. L E.
Yeah, man.
Interrupt me if I need to do something here. I think we've got you lined up there. Hi, Steve.
Very good.
Hey. Keep grabbing that coffee out of my. Thank you. My, my, thank you so much. Yeah, thank you for that wonderful dinner.
Eat soon or happy. They said they would always be.
Okay. Sounds good. Got it? Hey, for saving, yes, all right, responsibility. All right. We can call the order of the meeting of the re-meeting of previous one in June. If I can have everybody stand, I'm going to have Mr. Martin give the Pledge of Allegiance.
To be with me, Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with principle, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Martin. If we can, after this, have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Number one on this is consider changing the regular July 25th, 2023 meeting to the July 31st, 2023, with a closed session at 5:30 and the public session at 6:30. This would require a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'd second that.
All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you. Now, one of the things we wanted also go over some of the things that we have at the Board of Supervisors last meeting, there are some of the individuals that probably weren't here, and we're going to discuss some of the public library information. Couple of questions that we would have, and we have maybe discussion with the board members. But certainly would would like to have at A, David Mormon and Julie Phillips, when needed to call upon, hopefully that will be an opportunity that they can discuss this. But first and foremost, one of the things that I want to make sure of is that our stance as board members, what is our legalities and our strength within the board of having any control over the libraries? And I'm kind of asking our counsel for this, and we kind of went over these things somewhat last time, the room was somewhat empty, and I want to make sure that we try to reconvene on those those points we presently had before. So to our counsel, what is the power of the Board of Supervisors with respect to the books that go on the show?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I wanted, this is, this is really comes down to two significant points, the first of which is what is the structure of our government and with respects to how does staff interact with the library board and library board interact with staff and with the Board of Supervisors? It also has to do with what limitations there are on the powers of the library board, and I think it's important for me to lay those out in fairly completely the same as I did last time, but with a couple of refinements based upon questions that you've asked me. As I said previously, the Commonwealth of Virginia first established a library system in the 1823 Act, creating the Library of Virginia to supervise the statewide public library system. Local public libraries supervised by municipal authorities and the Library of Virginia began to be founded in the mid 19th century. And in 1970, the General Assembly created the modern system of public libraries and library boards in Virginia. Under the Modern Local and Regional Libraries Act, local governments are authorized to establish free public libraries. Library boards are independent political subdivisions of the Commonwealth. Their members serve four-year terms during which the members may not be removed except for misconduct or for neglect of duty. Bodataut is one of a small number of localities that may choose not to have a library board, but it has chosen thus far to continue having one. It has also taken the step of having the library director and the library staff become part of the county's civil service system. However, the library board continues to make the policies that the library staff implements. As set out in state law and the policy of Bodataut County, the library board has the power to make rules and set policies for the exercise of its authority, and this includes developing and implementing policies for the development and retention of books in the libraries. Bodataut County Public Libraries operate under established guidelines and policies that seek to ensure that it retains and exercises those powers responsibly and in accordance with the Free Speech Clause of the First Amendment to the United States Constitution and the parallel language in the Bill of Rights of the Virginia Constitution. In the case, United States v. American Library Association, which incidentally the American Library Association lost, but Chief Justice Rehnquist explained in the majority opinion that the purpose of public libraries is the worthy mission of facilitating learning and cultural enrichment. The library board's collection development guidelines were developed based upon the principles of intellectual freedom and access to information, providing a broad range of materials that reflect the diverse interests and perspectives of the Bodataut County community in accordance with professional standards and neutral criteria, not designed to censor certain viewpoints. As the U.S. Supreme Court said in another case, the discretion to collect or not collect a book may not be exercised in a narrowly partisan and political manner. Part of the wisdom of the degree of independence of the library board and the library staff is to provide insulation from political processes that would artificially artificially and possibly unconstitutionally limit their discretion in developing a collection that addresses topics of broad interest to the community at large. Now, I want to turn to the question of under what circumstances books may be removed that are already part of the library collection. Under the First Amendment, books that are already in the library may be removed due to considerations of the quality, size, and continuing public interest in the books in the collection. Books that are outdated or factually inaccurate may be removed. However, books may not be removed in an effort to prevent access to ideas or viewpoints with which the library board or others disagree. This is prohibited even even in the context of public school libraries, but the concern is particularly heightened in the context of free, open, public libraries. The language of Board of Education v. PICO, a 1982 U.S. Supreme Court case, is worth quoting in full, slightly paraphrased for length and clarity. Quote, "Libraries rightly possess significant discretion to determine the content of their libraries, but that discretion may not be exercised in a narrowly partisan or political manner. If a democratic library board motivated by party affiliation ordered the removal of all books written by or in favor of Republicans, few would doubt that the order violated the constitutional rights of citizens who were denied access to the books." The same conclusion would surely apply if an all-white library board motivated by racial animus decided to remove all books authored by blacks or advocating racial equality and integration. Our Constitution does not permit the official suppression of ideas. Thus, whether removal of books from libraries denied the citizens their First Amendment rights depends upon the motivation behind the library's actions. If the library board intended by their removal decision to deny respondents access to ideas with which they disagreed, and if this intent was the decisive factor in their decision, then the library board would have exercised its discretion in violation of the Constitution. To permit such intentions to control official actions would be to encourage the precise sort of officially prescribed orthodoxy unequivocally condemned by this court, this court being the United States Supreme Court. The court continued, "In brief, we hold that local library boards may not remove books from library shelves simply because they dislike the ideas contained in those books and seek by their removal to prescribe what shall be orthodox in politics, nationalism, religion, or other matters of opinion." Now, there is some claim that these general principles, and not just a claim, but it is true that these principles do not apply to materials that are obscene, materials that are obscene are not protected by this, by these provisions. So it's important to look at Virginia Code Section 18.2-372, which defines obscenity as "that which, considered as a whole, has as its dominant theme or purpose, an appeal to the prurient interest in sex, that is, a shameful or morbid interest in nudity, sexual contact, sexual excitement, excretory functions or products thereof, or sadomasochistic abuse, and which goes substantially beyond customary limits of candor in description or representation of such matters, and which, taken as a whole, does not have serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value." The Supreme Court of Virginia noted in the 2012 case Barsen v. Commonwealth that the General Assembly intended this test largely to parallel the definition in the U.S. Supreme Court case Miller v. California from 1973. The Supreme Court of Virginia has held that in the context of this definition, portrayal of nudity without more does not constitute obscenity. To be obscene, it must include also sexual activity or excretion. Quote, "It, quote, prohibits only hardcore pornography such as the examples delineated in Miller." Miller gave the examples of patently offensive material such as offensive representations, not just representations, but offensive representations or descriptions of ultimate sexual acts, normal or perverted, actual or simulated, and offensive representation or descriptions of masturbation, excretory functions, and lewd exhibition of the genitals. Our libraries have ordering criteria that they submit to publishers from whom they order their books every year that prohibit the publishers from sending the material that would be found obscene under this, these definitions." I'd also like to note, Mr. Chairman, that Virginia Code Section 18.2-384 allows citizens to proceed against publishers for selling obscene books in the Commonwealth. Many states have similar statutes allowing citizens to challenge the sale of obscene books. There have been approximately 15 to 20 books that have been reported to the Bodataut County libraries as either being here or potentially being here in our libraries that were, that were thought perhaps to be obscene. I've searched all of the cases, all of the reported cases in the United States, and I've been unable to find a single one of these books to have been held obscene by a single court. However, if citizens do believe that such books are obscene, they may proceed against the publishers themselves under this statute. If the publishers violated their contracts with the county by sending us obscene books, I would recommend at that time that we take appropriate contractual action. At this time, however, as a practical matter, if the libraries ultimately removed any of these books, I would have very strong concerns that that attempt would be a total failure. There is no getting around the fact that much of the public hue and cry about these books is motivated by disagreement with the viewpoint of these books. That is on the public record. Books that are similar, some even the same, very same titles, were recently removed from libraries in Leno County, Texas by order of their county commissioners. Citizens who wanted the books returned to the shelves sued. Thus far, the court has ruled that the challengers had a substantial likelihood of success, that the county did not, and that the books had to go back onto the shelf. While that case is on appeal and therefore is subject to change, I would not expect our federal courts in the Western District of Virginia to act differently. I believe that it is likely the costs of such a suit would be borne by the Bodataut County taxpayers. As I discussed the last time that we we talked about this matter, Mr. Chairman, the county is a member of a self-insurance risk pool that acts similarly to an insurer and covers our legal fees and judgments for liability that the county incurs in the normal course of business. However, the other members of our risk pool generally do not cover the costs of litigation instigated with a high probability of loss in order to make a political point. If the challengers to the removal of books, if you undertook the removal and the challengers won, not only would the books go back on the shelf, the book would owe their attorney's fees, which would likely be well into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Therefore, I must advise you as the Board of Supervisors that as long as we have a library board and professional librarians operating a free public library for the general interest of the public, it is wise to let them follow and implement the policies they have adopted. They have adopted what appear to me to be a reasonable criteria for selection and calling of books, and I know that they, that the library staff has a very clear breakdown of what percentages fall into which categories. But I have looked at the policies themselves. They've also adopted policies that give parents total control of their children's library use until age 13 and substantial control over their borrowing privileges until age 18. The parental control restrictions in place are stronger than those in most similar localities, both in our region and elsewhere in the Commonwealth. I hope that this information is helpful to you in making decisions about what your policies should be on this important matter. There are, of course, always small changes and different changes and and tax that you can take on any matter, but the tax that you're currently taking appears to be one that is very legally safe. Please let me know if I can be of further service to you on this matter, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. I certainly open up to our board to ask our counsel questions, or at this point in time, David Mormon or Julie Phillips, our library director, any questions, any other questions? I know we'll have some questions for Julie, if Julie and David want to come on down here. But it, from the counsel standpoint, any board members have any questions? All right. Okay. One of the things that that we we have questions for is that there's a lot of money that's being spent, taxpayers' dollars, that are going out towards these books and any books, but specifically some of the other ones have been in question. What is it that we pay as citizens towards some of these, these books that are out there?
That is a good question. So we have pulled some numbers for you. The total collection, so thinking about fiscal year 23 specifically, the materials budget for the library totaled $149 and 460, $149,462. Eighty-six percent of this budget is funded by the state, so that is state aid funding. $21,333 is funded by the county. We also did some studies of how the collection broke down in terms of some of the materials that people had concerns about. So, for example, we pulled out LGBTQ subjects to see what representation of our collection they had and pulled out, for different reasons, the Christian subjects to see what representation they had in our collection. And here I must apologize for an original report we pulled in mid-April. We pulled some numbers then to see how the subjects laid out, and when we went back and looked at that report, we realized that the LGBTQ subjects in the children's area were massively overrepresented because we'd accidentally pulled in an unrelated subject into that search. So the actual number of LGBTQ materials in the children's section came out far lower in the corrected report. But overall, for LGBTQ subjects in the library system, that represents 0.29% of the library's total collection of books, and that's across all subject areas and all four branches. In terms of Christian subjects, that is 19 times that number at 6.56%. So if you looked at all of the LGBTQ subjects and the the books that are in question, and you pulled in all of the subjects, including books that are not currently under controversy, that would come out to substantially less than one penny per taxpayer.
That being, and thank you for that, I appreciate that. The the other thing too is if I have a, you know, if I have a problem with a book that's up there, what is the process that I would have to go through to get either that reviewed or removed?
Yes, so the library has had a, what we call a reconsideration policy in place for, I'm guessing about 30 years and more. So what happens is a citizen can come and express their concerns about library material, and they would have a conversation with a librarian about that, just so we can understand their concerns more fully, and they can understand what our role as a public library is in making materials available. If they still have concerns at that point, then we give them a form to fill out where they tell us what they know about the material, the concerns that they have specifically about that title, and then we send that to a reconsideration committee of three members. Two of them are professional librarians and one normally from the Library Board of Trustees. That committee reads or views whatever the material is in its entirety. They do research on the title, the author, to see what it's all about. They they look at our collection development policy, and they see if it aligns with that policy, and they would make a recommendation accordingly for what to do with the material. And then it comes to me, and I relay that decision to the requister. If the requister does not feel comfortable with that result, then they can appeal that decision to the library board. So that's the the process in short.
Thank you. Other questions that our board members may have?
How many books? You said that policy had been in place for 30 years.
Over 30 years, yes.
How many books have been nominated for reconsideration?
Thirteen.
Over 30 years.
And those were all recent. We'd never had any reconsideration requests before that. We had had some concerns, but no one took us up on the process.
And just to clarify what Mr. Lockaby told us, I want to make sure I'm clear on this. We have chosen to use the age 13.
Correct.
For people to be supervised in the library. We don't have to have that rule.
We do not. In fact, most of the libraries that I know in Virginia set that age at eight or 10.
So we're more conservative in that regard.
Definitely.
Than most of our peers.
That's correct. We also require an adult accompanying the child, and in many libraries, that a person accompanying a younger child can be 12 or older.
An older sibling or something.
Right.
But we require an adult of age of 18 to be with them. Um, and and my last question for right now, can you tell us about what the library traffic has been like since we've been having this this public discussion? What what are you seeing in your libraries and what is your, what is your staff experiencing?
So in terms of traffic, we see almost 2,000 people coming in our doors every week, and that doesn't include emails and messages and phone calls and so on, or the people using our materials without contacting us. Out of these, almost 2,000 people every week, we probably get two or three at each branch, so maybe 10 people who, or actually per day, about 10 people per day, who express their support for libraries and say that they do not want any materials removed or restricted or in any way altered in our collection. We have been trying to track if anyone does want these materials removed. We have documented only six instances throughout this entire period where people have advocated for removal in in terms of talking with our librarians, but all of the rest, about 10 people per day, come through our doors and say, please keep them.
And I apologize, I do have one more question. Thank you for that. Tell us about if if a patron wanted to add a book. And I think we've recently had a question about that policy and that procedure. Can you tell us about that?
Sure. So anyone, any one of our patrons can submit suggestions for adding materials to our collection. We have multiple ways to do that, from just telling a librarian, emailing us a list. You can go into the online catalog and submit items for consideration. If you use eBooks, you can do it through the app. So there are multiple ways to get there. What we do is we take any of those requests and we put them through the same process that we do for purchasing our materials. Typically, we do not purchase older titles. We would refer that patron to our interlibrary loan service, which allows us to borrow materials from any library in the U.S. if we don't have it in our consortium. But for newer titles, we can continue, consider purchasing those titles. Again, it has to align with our collection development policy, so that is something that comes into play no matter what the request is.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I I would just ask, Ms. Phillips, are are you familiar with any library in the state of Virginia that has removed these books, or there's been a successful removal or?
Not to my knowledge. The only removal cases I know of, the courts have always told them to put them back, as Mr. Lockaby referred to.
Mr. Lockaby, are you familiar with any?
Dr. Bailey, I am not certain what the current status is in Appomattox County or what precisely it was that went down over there. I know that they removed all of the members of their library board and reappointed two of them or some such thing. I certainly am glad that I was not their county attorney trying to deal with that. I do not know exactly what happened with their books, and of course, given that there's a two-year statute of limitations to sue over these sorts of things, the fact that it's happened in the last month or so is pretty telling about there's probably some things going to still play out.
Thank you. Any other questions? One of the things I do have to ask is the books that are in question, they've been here, and I know you answered this previously. How long? How long have they been in the library?
So the books that were under reconsideration were in the library anywhere from December twenty twenty two to thirteen years prior. So those were the books that were formally reconsidered. There are certainly other titles out there in discussion that have not been requested for reconsideration, but the ones we received had been on the shelves for an average of five years.
Okay. Thank you. Any? Comments, other questions?
Just one more. Had they been reconsidered before that? Had there ever been a request until just recently?
Had not. In fact, many of them, we checked the circulation records, which means how many times items have been checked out. And many of them have been checked out on the the high end of circulation, meaning that they were popular in the community and people check them out over and over again.
But not not.
But they had not been formally reconsidered.
Until just.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you. If I can, Mr. Clinton, I know there are some items that you wanted to go over and one of them maybe has a resolution and consideration of something of importance here. So if I can, I'll give you the floor here and and have some discussion about that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll say first of all, and just just to express my own opinion, and and this is sort of a precursor to 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 my for semi-prepared statements, but we've been at this quite a while and what I'm gonna say, Mr. Chairman, will I think bring us along to a conclusion because we, as we've all indicated, and as the public certainly has suffered through some of this. We've been at it a long time. So I I hope to be able to offer a way forward to bring this to a conclusion. But you know, it's it seems it seems only fair that a board member, me in this case, especially since I'm on the library committee, library board of trustees, the ex officio member. Even though it may be premature, it's probably true that none of the five of us has really formed a solid opinion on this yet. Think we need to in the next two weeks, but we probably haven't. But it seems appropriate to share indicators, if you will. Where we individually, or where I'm in, I'm just speaking for myself. Where I may be headed on this, because we have been at it a long time and and this is this is not cast in stone, but it's the tendency that I have. First of all, I am if not persuaded, I'm moved and you've gotten my attention twice now, Mr. Lockaby, with with your with your observations. And they can be discredited as being bureaucratic and mindlessly legal, but they're legal folks, you know? And I don't think we can ignore those. So that's from a purely everyday bureaucratic viewpoint. Just 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 sharing some of my thoughts. I I bought four of these books, just the the electronic version. And, you know, I looked for something offensive, truly offensive. I looked for something that didn't meet the tests that Mr. Lockaby identified. Like speaking as a whole, you know, the entirety of the of the document, no sorts of tests. And I looked in vain. I, you know, I couldn't. There's there's some narratives in some of these books that I don't agree with, probably fairly strongly don't agree with it. But I could not for the life of me identify a reason that these books should be banned. As I looked at the books and it was four of them. And 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 I looked for the illustrations because I know a lot of it said that those illustrations are are offensive. And pornographic even. The word pornographic has routinely been used. To me, there were illustrations, there are fairly innocent illustrations trying to make a point. Not necessarily comfortable. But I think they were ideal for young parents reading to the, it's a read aloud book, allowing parents to share some important things, making it easier in most cases to do that. So I could see I could see compelling evidence that these have some value, may not always be comfortable, but but these books have some value. So those thoughts, let's see what else I have here. A value to some parents as educational material. And I just came to the conclusion that on balance, these books, not crazy about them, but they have some value and they don't meet the the tests that were identified by Mr. Lockaby. So that's my, that's that's where I am. Something might come up that'll change my mind on that, but after this long discussion, I've struggled with it. But that's firmly where I come down right now. So Mr. Chairman, if I, you want me to continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I I said in the beginning that I might offer a plea, if you will, the rest of the board to get this thing rolling. So I'm going to, this part I did I wrote ahead of time, so I'll kind of read this. I don't don't like to do that, but together with the public, I'm addressing the board now. We've been we've been debating this issue for more than six months. That attests to the importance that the board has assigned to the matter. It does not equate to, as some have claimed, stonewall, a stonewalling policy or delaying tactic. Rather, the board has wanted, and this is, this is what we've been doing, folks. Rather, the board has wanted to encourage a broad community conversation. The conversation that would allow the expression of diverse viewpoints and that would allow the board time to consider those viewpoints. That may have made the process rather tiresome. But that is far better than a haphazard rush to judgment. That's the last thing we wanted to do. It's my opinion that we've heard a reliable sample of opinions on the matter. And that we have gathered as much meaningful information as we are like to gather, as we are likely to gather. It is time for us to move it to a conclusion. So, Mr. Chairman, let me suggest that the board arrive at a draft, whatever you want to call it, policy statement or position pa- paper or a resolution, whatever you want to call the document, putting forth the board's position. And that that draft draft be debated and voted on at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is July thirty first. So I suggest, I'm not putting that into a motion at this point, but I suggest that's what we do and just set a a drop dead date of July thirty first, have before us a draft vote on it and drive on.
I think everybody being in grants in it. That's I mean, is that true? And just, you know, there's been another resolution that's been brought forward to us as well, but you know, I think in consideration with that and other things, let's let's get together and kind of conclude this resolution. Okay. And a grants will probably conclude this on the thirty first. And I think that you had something else that you wanted to mention about the library.
Relative to employment and so on.
Yeah.
Be advised that this is going to be long, so so bear with me. It's long, but it needs to be and has every justification to be long. So let me read this. This is a resolution being put forth to the board for for its consideration. Resolution, resolution in support of library director Julie Phillips and the Bonnetot County Library Staff. Whereas Bonnetot County Public Library's vision is to fuel a curious, creative, connected community. And whereas Bonnetot County Public Library's mission is to connect everyone everywhere to learn, grow and share. And whereas Bonnetot County Public Libraries have four core values. To be insatiable, curious, to anticipate and adapt to the needs of the community. Key words. To treat everyone with respect and kindness and to empower those around us. And whereas Bonnetot County Public Libraries provide all community members with access to resources, services and programs, meeting their informational, educational and recreational needs. And whereas Bonnetot County Public Libraries ensure a safe, neutral means of environment for the free exploration of a broad range of ideas and provide encouragement and opportunities for all community members. Patrons of the libraries regularly say that the Bonnetot County Library System is a group of friendly, welcoming, professional and knowledgeable staff. And whereas Bonnetot County Libraries foster an inclusive, innovative community by encouraging the free and civil exchange of ideas and information through personal connections and relationships. And whereas Bonnetot County Libraries have been led since two thousand and nineteen by library director Julie Phillips. And whereas Ms. Phillips brought an indomitable optimism, passion for learning and a commitment to public service that has resulted in innovations, partnerships and staff empowerment. And whereas Bonnetot Library Staff under Ms. Phillips' leadership have improved access to resources and programs by the following: eliminating fines, opening meeting rooms to nonprofits and community groups free of charge, increasing online resources, including the following: Help Now, a kindergarten tutoring program, Vet Now for military veterans, Niche Academy, online tutorials for digital literacy, and Just for Kids, a streaming video. In addition, improved access to resources and programs by developing new programs such as One Thousand Things Before Kindergarten. Told you it would be long, folks, but there's a lot here. Summer Learning Challenge in partnership with Bonnetot County Public Schools. The Boko Grateful Campaign, which grew to become a countywide initiative. Further, implementing a new, easier to use resource-rich library website. Opening a new library materials pickup and drop off site at the Daleville Daleville Family YMCA. Making library facilities more accessible for persons with handicaps and disabilities. Providing laptop computers for patron use while visiting the libraries. Providing curbside service and finally under some of this is all under the subcategory of new programs, offering kits and backpacks for student educational adventures. So back to the whereas paragraphs. Whereas the library staff has seen enhancements in the last few years, including a combined libraries slash recreation position at the Eagle Rock Branch. The addition of a Blue Ridge Branch Manager. The addition of a Blue Ridge Branch Manager for better service to the community and staff support and the start of staff training totaling thirty eight hundred hours since March of two thousand and twenty. And whereas under Ms. Phillips' leadership, libraries have continued and increased community partnerships with various organizations, including, and here's another long list, the YMCA, Virginia Department of Health, Economic Development, excuse me, Virginia Department of Health, yeah, Economic Development, Local Office on Aging, Roanoke Regional Small Business Development Center, Senior Navigator, Bonnetot County Public Schools, Cabanas Club and more. The library partner network has increased substantially and friends groups are also growing and being revitalized as friends of the libraries. Whereas in recent months, Ms. Phillips and Bonnetot County Library Staff have come under personal attack by members of our community in person, in local media and online. And whereas the Bonnetot County Board of Supervisors has the utmost confidence in Ms. Phillips and her staff to lead Bonnetot County Libraries and the Bonnetot County Board of Supervisors will not allow Ms. Phillips or her staff to be persecuted for doing the job that they are tasked to do. And that job is to serve all citizens of Bonnetot County. And whereas the Bonnetot County Library Team has tangible skills and organizational memory and know-how to serve a diverse community, they're always willing to help. Whether it be by finding a specific book for a patron, helping a child learn to read or hosting a community program, our library staff shows up for the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Bonnetot County Board of Supervisors give our support of confidence to Bonnetot County Library Director Julie Phillips. And we have the utmost respect for her and our library staff and appreciate the job that they do each and every day to support the citizens, visitors and businesses of Bonnetot County. Proclaimed the seventeenth day of July, two thousand and twenty three. I put this forward for consideration of the board, so.
There we have consideration. Do I have a motion? For consideration.
Move to a consider.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for that. One of the things that I can't go without saying here is to also let people know due to the conflicting schedules for this month, land use agenda items were addressed this evening. And anticipate the regular July BOS meeting will be held on the thirty first, as we talked about earlier, six thirty. The board is also happy to announce that we are making it possible for citizens to watch Board of Supervisors meetings and public hearings live, starting with this meeting. Have been a goal of the board to stream services beginning in the fiscal year of twenty four. And since this, it's been the first meeting FY twenty four. We are happy to have this new access. It's being made available to all. Citizens can access the live stream at www.bonnetotva.gov/livestream. The means will be recorded and published on the Bonnetot County YouTube channel, and it's important to note that citizens will not be able to write comments on the digital platforms while viewing this live stream. Also, it is well known, today's meeting is a continuation, June twenty seventh meeting, and therefore there will be no citizens' comments, period, this evening. If you're interested in during one of the public meetings, please fill out the comment card and give to Deputy Clerk. So I can't go without saying that we've now gone to live streaming. Hopefully, everybody is able to use that. Let's move in towards a public hearings. And number three, if we can public, the Bonnetot County Planning Commission, there is some text amendments, chapter twenty five.
Figuring out some technical difficulties over.
Oh, okay.
Live streaming, I apologize.
Yeah, this is.
I'm not leaving you in suspense.
Okay.
That was quite the dramatic pause.
Oh, very dramatic, very long.
And this is to go over the definition of church, definition of garage private and also the removal of the kennel private.
Absolutely. So first, I want to apologize for not having more of a tie or a jacket on. We did a mobile tour. It's the American Planning Association Conference here in Virginia. It's in Roanoke, so we were able to take some planners up to Greenfield, show off our facilities here, go up to Altech for a very interesting tour, and then go to Daleville Town Center, and I did not have the opportunity to change after that tour.
Nicole, are you here? Is there a change of possible change of clothes that he has here?
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I'll say I did not hit anybody or hit anything on the bus. I think that deserves some props. So I digress. Before you today are three text amendments for your consideration. As you stated, Mr. Chair, we are considering a change, the definition of church, the change to a definition of garage private and the change to the kennel private use. I will preface all these by saying the intent for all three of these changes is to provide an ordinance that works better for the people of Bonnetot that allows them to do more with the current uses they have and also provides a little bit more ease for administration on our side. So hopefully they will streamline the process for everybody involved. So I'll read the legal advertisement here for the church text amendment change. The Bonnetot County Planning Commission has authorized consideration of text amendments to chapter twenty five zoning of the Bonnetot County Code that would amend Zoning of the Bonnetot County Code that would amend the definition of church to allow a daycare or private school operated by the church as a permitted accessory use. Amend the definition of garage private to remove limitations on the number of garage doors and garage units associated with multifamily dwellings, and to remove the use kennel private. So, the first change here is a review of and proposed changes to the definition of church. Essentially, as it's written today, the church definition precludes churches from offering daycare or educational activity uses. That is something that has changed. The industry has changed, and folks are finding it a little more difficult, a little more costly, to find quality daycare services for their children. This, in our opinion and research that we've conducted, is an arbitrary limit on churches for being able to offer those. It's a common use in other localities, and simply the way it's written today precludes them from doing so. So, the proposed change here is simply to change the last sentence of the definition to read daycare centers and educational activity uses may be considered accessory uses of a church. This would permit any current church from offering those services. The key to this is that they will still need to meet any building code requirements for daycare uses or for any sort of educational activities offered. That would require submission to our department for review of their facility. It requires ingress and egress, requires fire, safety, all the whole gamut of things that you would want to see in a daycare center. So, it would not be a church with a basement that's not being used, and they throw some kids in there and they offer daycare. It would need to be something that would be reviewed through our department, ensure the building is safe, ensure that's quality location for children to be watched after, and would just kind of limit zoning from getting in the way of doing so. Are there any questions about that use? I'll go through all three, and I believe you have the opportunity to make a motion for approval or denial of all three of those at the end. I'm happy to just pause and take some questions on this use.
Any questions?
Were there, were there any concerns about this change, allowing this change?
No. At the public hearing, at the planning commission meeting, we didn't hear from anyone who had any concerns. I don't believe we received any feedback in between when we post these online. We also did a review of other localities. It's kind of a mixed bag as to how they treat these. And we also reviewed the American Planning Associations, any offerings they had on guidance for this, and there was no real guidance other than just to make sure that daycares are appropriately served by the building code, and that they have the appropriate infrastructure around them to support these.
Yeah, I see you, you've included what Roanoke County Bedford and Pulaski County.
Yes, sir.
Described, so that's helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. In that case, I'll move on if that works for you all. The next one here is a review of and proposed changes to the definition of garage private. Currently, there is a somewhat arbitrary limitation on the number of bay garage doors garages can have. A personal garage is limited to no more than three bay doors. That actually does not limit somebody from being able to build two separate three-bay door garages to get around that, to kind of close that loophole and make something that works. We are proposing to eliminate that three-single bay garage doors. Accessory uses are also already governed by a seven percent cap of the actual area of the parcel itself. So, you wouldn't necessarily see a mega garage, for lack of a better word, pop up in a residential location. It just kind of removes this from the definition. It makes it a little easier to administer for folks that have the space and just have this arbitrary limitation on the three-single bay doors. Additionally, there's another piece to this that talks about the multi-unit dwellings. Kind of an odd way to do this, but the private garage may be designed and used for the storage of one and one-half times as many automobiles as there are dwelling units. That's not necessarily something from our department's viewpoint that we should be building into a definition of garages. It's something that is likely market-based, market-governed if the multifamily building has the space and has the demand for that type of storage. It doesn't really seem like it's pertinent for us to put that limitation on there. So, the proposed changes are simply to remove that three-single bay door caveat, and then also remove the multi-unit piece of that definition. Thoughts or questions there?
Questions from board? None.
Okay. And last but not least, review of and proposed changes to the regulation of the use kennel private. The kennel private use, we have had several cases come up, several complaints that have come up about the use of private kennels. There is already a piece of the Bonnetot County Code that addresses dogs, addresses the keeping of dogs in private kennels. This somewhat conflicts with that existing use, and the way that we administer the code provides somewhat of a gray area between animal control and us on how to deal with it. So, for the best interest of everyone, for complaints and for us to administer them, we feel it'd be prudent and pertinent to go ahead and remove that use in the zoning ordinance and allow the other piece of the code to actually appropriately administer that through the animal control officer, and just kind of remove us from being a middleman between those two. So, that's the proposed use there is just to delete the definition of kennel private, and to remove that as a special exception use in the A-one, FC, and rural residential zoning districts. Wouldn't preclude anybody from having dogs or keeping dogs. It would just keep that out of the hands of the zoning, planning and zoning department itself.
And go directly to the animal control.
Exactly, yeah.
I think that is fantastic. Any questions?
Just on, on the kennel, just, John, just to make sure we all understand, you don't have any authority over that, this role.
Currently.
It's in there, but there's no real enforcement.
Correct. Very difficult for us to enforce any concerns that pop up with private kennels. That's largely the domain of the Sheriff's Department, the animal control officer, and it just ends up something that we get phone calls about, that we have to then pass along to the Sheriff's Department, and then just kind of ends up in that little bit of he said, she said type thing that we'd like to eliminate as, as much as possible.
Any other questions? If no other questions, then we have before us these text amendments regarding church, garage, and the kennel in private. The Bonnetot County Code, do I have a recommendation for approval of these text amendments?
So, move.
Awesome. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. And now, number four, Mr. Baker. ML Properties LLC rezoning request.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This next item is out of the Blue Ridge District. ML Properties LLC requests to rezone two point oh five-two acres of a three-point-six-nine-two acre parcel from Business B-one Use District to the Business B-three Use District, and Jimmy and Leslie Johnsrod request to rezone point one-eight-five acres of a three-acre parcel from Agriculture A-one to the Business B-three Use District with possible property conditions in accordance with section twenty-five dash two-six-two permitted uses in section twenty-five dash five-eight-one. Zoning map amendment only initiated of the Bonnetot County Code. The change of property conditions associated with existing zoning in Business B-three Use District in accordance with section twenty-five dash forty-seven. Conditional zoning of the Bonnetot County Code located at twenty-six fifty-five Blue Ridge Boulevard, US Routes four-sixty and two-two-one and one-eleven Morning Dove Lane, State Route fourteen-eleven, identified on the real property identification maps of Bonnetot County as section one-oh-eight parcels twenty-two-one A and twenty-two-one B. This just provides you all an an idea of the existing zoning adjacent to these two properties. I would like to point your attention to one-oh-eight dash twenty-two B. And just let you all know that the current use of this property, this is the Johnsrod property. It is currently being used for the purpose of single-family dwelling. The only proposed change is to rezone this point one-eight acre portion here for the, the purpose of a septic drain field. This, if approved, this portion of the property only would be zoned, rezoned, added to this lot owned by ML Properties. And the, the existing use of single-family dwelling would continue. This shows you the current state of the property. This section here, one-oh-eight dash twenty-two-one A is owned by ML Properties and leased by JF Petroleum Group. They are a company that specializes in construction and consulting services for petroleum. This just gives you a better idea of what the property currently looks like. So, this request is just to simply, again, add a proposed drain field to the back of the property, and then add training services for petroleum infrastructure, installation, and removal. As part of that, they are proposing to add an eight-thousand-square-foot training facility that you can see here, left-hand corner. And then four concrete pads with some training equipment, again, for those removal and installation training practices. And then just an area where they can practice on pea gravel to simulate soil for the removal and installation of those, of those infrastructure types. They will propose to pave the gravel areas and add employee parking and trainee parking, so the areas that you see here that are currently gravel, most of that will be paved if this request is approved. Any new equipment would be moved behind the existing warehouse that would remain just as part of their existing business operations. It would be moved to this area that you see here behind an eight-foot-tall screened fence. The last thing I'd like to note is that the property does, the ML Properties portion does border the Blue Ridge Parkway. In an effort to mitigate any impacts on the view shed, they are proposing to plant a row of evergreen trees in this area here. This just gives you an idea of what the current view shed is directly from the Parkway. These were taken on the Parkway. So, as you can see, minimal view shed impact here, and with the addition of, of evergreen trees being planted, it'll just further help during the wintertime when leaves are not on the existing trees there. The applicants have offered some proposed proper conditions. The development of the property shall be constructed in substantial performance with the concept plan, concept site, site plan included with the application, and as shown a few slides ago, prepared by Engineering Concepts Incorporated and dated May first, two thousand and twenty-three. A row of evergreen trees shall be installed adjacent to the boundary of the Blue Ridge Parkway as shown upon the concept site plan. Overnight parking of equipment shall be located in the equipment parking area to the rear of the existing office warehouse building. The proposed fence around the equipment parking area shall be of material of lower reflectivity, and no storage of inoperable equipment will be allowed. That's all I have. The applicants are in attendance. Myself and the applicants would be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Baker?
Mr. Chairman, the evergreen trees, shouldn't they be a minimum height or a minimum maturity?
Yes, that will be taken care of. They will have to go through a technical site plan process to ensure adherence to our zoning ordinance and any building code standards.
Any other questions? If not, do I have an applicant that would like to speak? Okay. No questions there. All right, let me open the public hearing, and I think I have one individual that would like to speak on this, so, open a public hearing. And Mr. Clark. Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Got it. Okay, I think that was, is anybody else would like to speak on this? Not, we'll close the public hearing. And do we have a motion or any discussion that we have on the board about this? If not, do I have a motion for the ML Properties LLC zoning request?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for approval. I'd second that.
Any discussion? If none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
Now, this, this also goes with the preferred, uh, proper conditions, one through five.
Yes, sir.
All right, number five. Mr. Pearson, we can, TND text amendment. Um, I do have a question before you begin that. Brady Vaughn, there is a support for this. I didn't know if it was for three, four, five, or six. Five and six. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The next item on your agenda is text amendments that are being proposed by petition of a property owner to the TND Use District. These are affiliated with the rezoning request that comes next. But keep in mind, these text amendments are being made to the overall ordinance, and any future TND requests for rezoning that you may get would, would, you know, perhaps benefit from these amendments as well. The Bonnetot County Board of Supervisors did hear the petition and have authorized a consideration of these text amendments to chapter twenty-five zoning of the Bonnetot County Code that would amend the development standards of the traditional neighborhood district referred to as TND. The first slide on your screen comes from the TND district language that exists now. It's the purpose statement, and I think a lot of us know that TNDs are mixed-use developments and kind of somewhat their purpose are. I highlighted that, in yellow, the, the last section there. It's kind of, kind of interesting to avoid the common features of conventional suburban development patterns, which include certain things, and, and this is within the purpose statement. And, and the ordinance intends to try to avoid buildings that are spaced further apart, set further, further back from streets and sidewalks. It tries to avoid the, the traditional development of parking lots that are located between buildings and the streets within a neighborhood setting. Garages that are predominant, front suburbs, dwellings, streets that are designed for high traffic, and open spaces that are kind of leftover and not really utilized for anything. These are things that the TND district tries to avoid, and the amendments that are before you tonight really go to minimize some of the standards in the ordinance to further avoid these types of features of conventional developments in the way of carrying out the purpose statement within the TND district itself. Now, when the petitioner came in for the amendments, they were early in the phases of the planning of the request that you'll hear in a little while. And as such, they, they felt like there might have been some other amendments that would be needed in, in addition to what's in front of you tonight. In working through that plan and working with the petitioner, staff has drafted amendments that are reduced or minimized in, in degree. So, there are definitely minimal standards or changes that would further support the purpose statement of the TND district, and, and certainly would benefit the proposed development that is coming before you. And, and looking at the amendments, one of the things that, that the amendments are attempting to do is create a new land use category called Dwelling College. Now, that is just like any other single-family detached residential home. However, it is limited to the number of units that could go within the TND, and it would only be in the TND. Would have to go in the core area, could not be more than ten percent of the dwelling units in core, and. And would have a very small lot size. So these would be little infill lots that would be scattered throughout perhaps or grouped together. They could go down as little as 1,000 square feet in lot size. So in creating that use category, it was necessary to include language throughout the T N D district on lot size, lot width and things of that nature. In drafting, you may recall the creation of the R four district. I think a lot of you were on the board at that time. The R four is a district that pertains more to multifamily apartments. When we did that, we did not put R four in the T N D district. It would not have necessarily precluded apartments from going into T N D. But one would have had to have asked for a separate special exception permit for the apartments and that use. So that's being added here as a permitted use. This is already always going to have to come through a rezoning process. So there's not necessary a need to ask for separate S E P for that use. Traditionally, the mixed use developments like within a T N D would have a mixture of single family detached, attached apartments and other types of residential uses anyway. Again, dwelling cottage, this is where the 10% of the total dwelling units in core was added. And there was a single family detached dwelling lots for accessory dwelling units was noted. So when it come to the residential lot and building requirements, again, to follow that purpose, get a little bit denser within the, the T N D neighborhood. Minimum lot sizes are typically being reduced. You've got the complete language in your agenda package. I'd be happy to go through each one if you'd like. Or I can kind of summarize some of the, the standards if the board has a preference either way.
Prefer summarize?
Yeah, this summary. Well, in general, as you probably noted, the, the single family detached dwellings, duplex, some of those lot areas are going down. Other uses like the single family attached or townhomes, your multifamily, those, there, those aren't changing at all. Those minimum lot sizes are still there. Lot widths were adjusted to reduce those, get a little bit tighter on the lot width for the single family detached duplex, single family attached and multifamily units. A lot of that's going to be kind of covered by the, the next item on the list there, the maximum lot coverage that that's in most cases for the single family detached cottage and duplex and single family attached is going from seventy five to eighty percent coverage. The multifamily would stay like it is. And in many cases, the amount of coverage that can be placed on the lot through that maximum lot coverage is controlling what size of lot you're going to have and how wide it is. Required yards for residential uses. We certainly had to add the cottage dwelling as a new land use category. Most of the other ones are staying the, the same for the fronts and the sides. On your rear, the detached, single family cottage duplex is being reduced from twenty five to six. Again, a lot of that's going to be covered by the, the amount of the lot that the, is needed for the size of the structure that's going to be on there. Let's see, as far as garages go, if you remember from the purpose statement, we want to avoid garages as a predominant feature. So we cleaned this section up a little bit. It didn't make a whole lot of sense the way it was written before. But we just rewrote that to say garage is serving residential dwellings and accessory access directly from an alley may be located six feet from the lot line parallel to valley. We don't want those to go too far. We want them to not go too close either. We don't want to create situations where there, there don't have at least eighteen feet where you could get a car off of there and they're hanging out in the road if they're too short. As far as encroachments allowed, we would increase a little bit of the encroach allowed to include covered unclosed entry porches, east steps, stoops, unenclosed garage can corrals, rain barrels and gutters into the required yards. As you know, we have some encroachments that are already allowed. This just expands upon what the ordinance already would allow. Commercial, very similar, reduction in a minimum lot size, a lot width and the rear setback as well as some of the accessory building setbacks and commercial from ten to six feet. So very similar in nature. You're still going to have some minimum lot coverage. So depending on the scale or the size of development, that's really going to control a lot more on that width and the size of the lot as depending on what, what's trying to be placed on the lot. There's a chart in the T N D district now, use district that, that controls the types of streets, alleys, paths, blocks and parking and so forth in the on-street parking in the ordinance. The only changes we're really making to this is right now, there's that very last entry that's just listed alley. And alleys, as we commonly know them, are typically providing secondary access, even though that's not stipulated in this particular language. We're adding an alley primary access and changing the existing alley to secondary access. Now, what that does is basically there's a provision in the text amendments that would allow for a single family detached home to actually, actually only be provided primary access of the only access via an alley. They would be having to or be limited to lots that fronted on a, a improved open space area. So it's kind of a little bit of a unique setting. But what happens is the right of way gets a little wider and the paving cross section gets a little wider because that will be more accommodating to the fire and EMS responders as well as the, the, it being the only access point in case you're meeting another car. That would go to eighteen feet from the typical alley, which could be fourteen feet. There are a lot of state highways where you have high speed that is actually passing on eighteen feet. Now, that's typically feels a little narrow when you're driving at faster speeds, but when you're driving at a slow speed, eighteen feet provides a sufficient ability to have two-way traffic. So streets, alleys, blocks pass, this is the same section that the table is in. This is where we pick up the language that talks about alleys providing primary access to lots. Should only be allowed when said lots front on improved open space areas such as parks and squares. Currently sidewalks would not be required along any alleys. So since that's changing somewhat, we wanted to clarify that sidewalks are not required along the alleys, not even the primary access alleys. Because there again, these homes will be fronting on improved parks and, and we would in typically see some sort of approved pedestrian accommodations within those parks themselves. There's a provision under the Property Owners Association section right now that actually requires the recordation of restricted covenants basically prior to the rezoning. That's not typically how we do things. We don't do that in any other subdivisions that we, we hear and potentially have proper conditions on. So what we want to do is change that to where the, the restricted covenants would, would be recorded prior to any final plat approval where any lots were being created. And that would be consistent with the practice that we have concerning restricted covenants when there are any proper conditions. Along those same lines with accessory uses and structures, the language that addresses accessory dwelling units is a little confusing. So this next section looks to clarify that language as well as to reduce the, the lot size in which an accessory dwelling unit can be established. Accessory dwelling units is kind of like your mother-in-law suite or a little separate cottage, maybe above a detached or attached garage that would be for a family member, something of that nature, visitors and guests. We also needed to change the permitted structures in required yards. So there was already a section that addressed that in another part of the zoning ordinance. So we wanted to make sure that, that those stayed in place and we put the exception in as otherwise allowed in the T N D district. So those encroachments that I mentioned earlier would only be applicable in the T N D use district, not to the other districts as well. The only time that we needed to jump outside of the zoning ordinance to, to clarify and avoid a conflict in, in information was in the definition of terms that comes out of the subdivision ordinance. And this is where the requirement that alleys only be allowed for basically secondary access. So, so in other words, they already had frontage on some other street. So we wanted to go ahead and put an exception in here for the the primary access alleys in the T N D district, just so that we would not have any conflicting standards throughout county code. Now, the planning commission did hear this request and they voted for oh, with Commissioner Lucas abstaining from the vote to recommend approval of the text amendments. And I would be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Any questions for, from Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Couple.
If we can go back to minimum lot size for commercial. You, you, you may have. You, you may have explained this and I missed it. But that's a pretty big reduction, eighty five hundred to a thousand.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, do, do we have to get, I guess.
You know, I think.
Done, but man, I.
Yeah, and I think what makes sense in, in, and I know the text amendments are broad, they're countywide. You know, this particular development that you're going to hear about in a little bit is kind of unique in nature. I know that they, they have hopes of promoting a lot of maybe like a mom and pop type businesses and not just the, the larger chain type businesses. So they want to be able to create a unique environment that, that they can create some small, almost a little bit more like Main Street type feel like you might find in the town of Finn Castle. You know, when you, when you think about some of the little stores and shops that are on their individual lots, sometimes they're attached. Sometimes they're not. But to create some really small mom and pop shops, this would enable that to happen. But certainly if somebody were going to come in, it would not preclude them from doing a larger building. Well, certainly, are you going to be able to put that larger building on a lot that's a thousand square feet? Absolutely not. You're still going to have to meet parking requirements. You're going to have maximum impervious coverage, floor areas and things like that. So really what we're doing by reducing the size is allows a lot more creativity and allows a lot more possibilities to start pulling in some smaller little mom and pop type, type shops.
Okay. So it's been well thought out there.
I would say there's been quite a bit of time put into staff's work very closely with the petitioner and their project as well as the planning commission has really went through the amendments very strongly and hopefully that's reflected in, in their recommendation.
Okay. Then if you would go to the boulevard, neighborhood center boulevard. Yeah, I guess that's it.
Typically what this chart does now, keep in mind, everything in black is, is currently in the ordinance. The, you'll hear a little bit about the street types that's being proposed for the, for the neighborhood coming up. But typically what you would see in neighborhood center boulevard is like the entry into the Delville Town Center. That's typically going to be that two lanes. It's got that divided median and, and the trips per day is what drives the roads. So throughout the neighborhood, like the town center or the, the project coming up, depending on what those average daily trips are for the uses that are in that section or that road, it's going to stipulate the minimum requirement. So you'll see that in the, in their primary entrance, just like at the town center, that's where you would anticipate to have your, your largest number of cars. It will trip that three thousand and, and they'll be doing a neighborhood center boulevard if I'm not mistaken on that main entry that they have, just like the town center. But as you go throughout the neighborhood and those traffic counts start going down, then they can begin to reduce the degree of right of way and the cross section of paving to be more appropriate with the, the level of traffic that would be in that particular section of the neighborhood.
Okay, just two or three reasonable, reasonable questions, I guess. So the boulevard is thirty miles per hour. Everything else is twenty or fifteen. You know, when you think about it, in almost any application, this is going to be a fairly small gross area, you know, it's not going to be. So does it really make sense and do we gain a whole lot by reducing the speed to increasing it, I'll say, to thirty on the boulevard versus twenty on the side streets? So that's just asking for trouble and confusion. That's a minor question, but you know.
It's a good question. Speed limits weren't something, design speeds weren't something that we looked at. They, the petitioner didn't propose anything, so we were, we were really focusing on some of the, the things that, that they were petitioning, number one. And number two, we took a couple of opportunities in areas where we, we saw something that maybe could be worded a little different to make it more clear, clear. Design speeds was not one of them. The way the advertisement was done, if, if the board you know, identifies something else with the the ordinance that it wanted to change, you certainly would have the opportunity to at this time with the way the ads were done. So if you felt like you would rather see more consistency that thirty be twenty, certainly you could propose an alternate motion that would include that.
It, it, it may keep pace in the family because we know how it goes. People perceive vehicles in a, in a residential area to be going faster than they actually are.
And, and I would just, one other little thing I would say on that, the design speed is the, you know, the design by the engineer of that cross section. Keep in mind, pretty much all of these types of roads, the neighborhood center boulevard are being typically designed as a V dot road that would be taken into the V dot system for maintenance. So V dot would actually, even though it's design speed, they would actually stipulate the actual speed limit that would be placred for that particular section of road.
Just two more questions on the same issue. Is this, maybe it's elsewhere in the, in the in the document, but this is saying that by definition, the center boulevard has to have an eight foot median?
Yes.
That's causes trouble before, you know, it would be dependent on topography of just something to be aware of. And then the final question. I think I've forgotten what it was, but that covered the that covered the big ones.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Just a quick question, Drew. Thank you for your presentation. I understand that these text amendments would be applied to any future T N D. Are they also retroactive?
Typically not, and the reason I would say that is.
And that may be a moot point.
Yeah, you'll hear in the presentation in a little while. The T N D has language that will stipulate that there's a, a development plan with design guidelines that are a requirement as part of the application. And if, if that request is actually adopted and approved and that rezoning happens, that plan will become part of the guiding documents. In other words, you should really think of that in the terms of substantial conformity to those plan and design guidelines. And if the plan and design guideline shows something more stringent than what is in the ordinance, the more stringent requirement rules. So I would say from that perspective, would not because they do have to stipulate the, the planned roads throughout the, the neighborhood as part of their, I'm gonna call it the master plan, the, the development plan.
Well, and I was kind of thinking about what Supervisor Clinton asked because I noticed that massive reduction from eighty five hundred to a thousand square feet. So in an existing T N D, could they now go in if this were passed and put in a thousand square feet commercial building?
From a building lot perspective, yes, I would think that they could. They typically don't lay out all the commercial lots. Like and I'll talk about the Delville Town Center since that's the other T N D. There, there definitely is still some. There there definitely is still some commercial land up along Lee Road or or area in there that would uh feasibly be be developed as commercial. So it would not preclude them from uh benefiting from the lot size and lot whiz when they, if they were to partial that up.
Thank you.
And that would have to meet the stringent conformity in in place, right? Like you said, if as long as it's stringent, it should be able to do.
Yeah, in in the areas where their plan and that that T and D was done at a time that wasn't as strict uh on that that development plan, that master plan as what's in the ordinance today. So it's a it's a little more generic from the layout perspective. So they probably have a little more flexibility than what the ordinance would allow somebody to do today. Um, but yes, they they should be able to to to, you know, get some benefit from the lot size if they wanted to create an area with some smaller commercial sites and things like that.
Any other questions?
Uh, I've got one, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Pearson, you you made mention that I believe you said that the infrastructure, the alleys and so forth, and the changes would make the fire and safety access better. Did I hear that right?
Um, I'm not sure I said better, but uh what what went into the thought behind the uh especially the eighteen foot for the primary access, so there's no other roads. Um, you know, they're going to have to, there's going to be limited number because they're going to have to front on improved open space like a park or square. But the eighteen foot cross section um with the development that's coming up, uh fires been working very closely uh with with this process as well and looking at it, um you hear me talk a little bit about that. I knew that uh they had some questions and uh the engineer on that particular project had run auto turn and they will be working through the technical and and uh there's there's uh no, no particular concerns that, you know, would um negate, you know, fire response and EMS response on the eighteen foot alleys. They they certainly at the intersections, this is the minimum. Um, you know, even if they have to widen out with a radius at intersection and things like that. Um, looking at auto turn, it shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you. Any other questions? I know that uh the petition petition was set up with David Spiegel. Do you have any further follow up on this? I know that you would want want to speak on this as well.
Twenty eight seventy eight Mountjoy Road in Buchanan. And we really view the text amendments as bringing the T and D ordinance up to kind of the uh needs of the community today. The original ordinance was adopted, I believe, in two thousand two or two thousand three. And when Daleville Town Center came in, there were some modifications of the ordinance at that point to uh accommodate what the vision was for Daleville Town Center. But since then, there really hasn't been any uh updating to the ordinance. And again, we view this, for instance, on the uh thousand foot commercial um square footage per lot. We view that really as an integral part of what we're trying to accomplish here by creating a community. Right? So we envision uh the picture that I always had in my mind for those smaller commercial lots was a barber shop where, you know, you go in and there's a row of barber chairs and there's a row of seats and you you get your haircut. That type of small business that would relate well to the residential setting that the rest of the uh project would have. So that that that's kind of, again, an update. The cottages were a similar thing, you know, with the market now for what I'm going to call mother-in-law cottages. Uh, that's an important part. That's an important for uh a part for a lot of people to be able to age their parents i- in the same place where they are, so they can take care of them and be with them and 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 and, you know, follow them and and know what's going on with them. Those accessory dwelling units were very, very similar to that. So again, we look at it as an update really to make the ordinance more compatible with the way people are living right now. The other aspect that I think deserves uh just a brief point on it is this is exclu- these text amendments are exclusive to the T and D. So we're not talking about having these amendments to R three or R two where you have a bunch of different zoning districts of R two or B two or whatever it is out there that this is going to affect. I would submit to you, this is a very uh unique uh zoning process. So the only other T and D that we have in the county here is Daleville Town Center. And uh Mr. Wampler or Mr. Pearson could tell you a lot better than I do, I can, but the requirements of of going through the T and D process with the minimum acreage requirements, which I think are fifty or seventy-five acres, the public water and public sewer requirements, and then the whole planning process that uh has to be undergone with the board's approval. So it's not a situation where somebody comes in and gets the property rezoned B two when they're off to the races. No. There's a whole uh background and uh more than a concept plan is uh put forth with the rezoning proposal to make sure that e- even though the the uh commercial lots, as I may say, a thousand feet, to make sure that the plan as a whole fits the needs of the county. So again, I don't want to, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but uh that's that's really what air intention was on it.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions you have at all? Very good. If I can, I'd like to open a public hearing and there's a few people who'd like to speak about this. Um. Brady Vaughn? Okay. Any any questions from that board? Traffic? Okay. Thank you. Um, Dale? Looks. Um, Mr. Painter, Rick Painter.
Rick Painter, one seven three Murray Drive Troutville. Uh, first, I want to uh express my concern over the board's willingness as a licensed mental health professional and a mandated reporter for most of my life. I want to express my concern over your consideration of the current library policy. I've expressed the reasoning for it in the current edition of the of the Finn Castle Herald to lay out the argument.
Is this about agenda five or library?
I'll get there in a second. Um, I'm asking you simply to read that argument because the current policy could very well have been written by a pedophile. So anyway. But about the T and D and the policy changes, there were multiple policy changes here, as best I can tell, close to ten. And if you are restoring a car or rebuilding a house, you reach a certain point to where it is declared not a renovation, but a rebuild. And it comes under a whole different set of rules and regulations. This is not one change or but several. So it is a technically rewrite of the T and D policy. And as I've said to the board several times, leadership operates on certain principles and priorities. One of those is you don't set policy when a specific situation is being considered because that guarantees more than likely bad policy. Now, if if you wanted to amend the current proposal and apply it to just the Murray Farm, that would be great, but if you change the entire T and D with less than five to six hours of consideration, you've undertaken a major policy change with very little actual consideration that could have, as some of you have already identified, soon could have some ramifications down the road that will leave you standing there going, well, it seemed like a good idea at the time. So if you approve the Murray property, because it has been said several times, this project is the entire reason for this rewrite. It has been said, this project is unique. Uh, and and that has been the term that has been applied to it. Uh, Mr. Pearson said, what we are trying to accomplish here, meaning it's not about all the T and D or the T and D policy. It's about what they want to accomplish here. So you can separate, distinguish, decide on this one before you change the entire T and D policy and actually spend some valid and necessary time before you go changing policies and rewriting the entire T and D just flying off the cuff because changing a countywide policy with less than ten hours of deliberate uh consideration and evaluation is really flying by the seat of your pants. So I just encourage you to take some time before you do a rewrite of the entire policy.
Thank you. Um, next is Walter Michael.
Good evening. I'm Walter Michael, twelve fifteen Archway Road, Blue Ridge. And uh wanted to start off with, just because something works in Hanover doesn't mean it will work in Goosling or for that matter in Biotech County. Uh, Dr. Bailey and Dr. Scott Norm, you have probably participated in an INDAs in your professional life. As you know, businesses usually do not go right from the research uh benchmark to a production scale. Typically, they utilize they utilize at least one intermediate step such as a pilot plant scale or in your case, uh clinical studies. Therefore, I suggest you follow the same tried and true method to approve this as a SEP for the Harvest at Blue Ridge project. As the saying goes, it's difficult to try and put the genie back in the bottle. Thank you.
Thank you. Has there been anybody else would like to speak on this? Not a closed public hearing? So number six, I'm sorry about that. Okay, I had you down for number six and it said number five, but I'm. You want, would you like to speak on this? Yep, that would be the next one, six. Got you covered? All right. Um. Close of public hearing. And do we have a motion for the T and D text amendments? I'll move to approve. I'd second that. Any discussion? One of the things that uh I think is important, I think Steve made a point on uh was to propose thirty to twenty speed limit. I'm not opposed to that whatsoever, uh and maybe we should make that a proposal. To stay, your thoughts?
I'm not sure I'm hearing what you're saying.
But. Speed limit.
Oh, well, I think I think what Mr. Pearson said when when he defined that chart as being the design speed limit, you know, that that's all it is. And what he was saying is in any given application, we can lower it or or raise it. So yeah, I feel okay with what what we're proposing.
Okay. Um, and and I think from consideration standpoint, there's been individuals um as well, the planning commission, there certainly has been those individuals going over this and researching as well. So I think it's not just the Board of Supervisors, but it's also the Planning Commission and our staff has been spending a lot of time. This is well put out, so. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Pearson, if I can, the T and D is running SEP and the commission permit request.
Okay, so the next item on your agenda is a rezoning, special exception permit for private roads in a commission permit request. Uh, the board will be asked to take a separate vote on each of those three items. And I'll get started by reading the legal ad. So in the Blue Ridge District, the Murray Sider Company Incorporated and Murray Farm Properties LLC are requesting to rezone three parcels containing eighty nine point three nine acres, one point six acres and three point eight acres uh from the agriculture A one um and residential R one use districts to uh the traditional neighborhood district T and D in accordance with section twenty five dash five eighty one, zoning map amendment owner initiated in chapter twenty five zoning article two, district regulations generally, division nine, traditional neighborhood district, a special exception permit for private roads in accordance with section twenty five dash two ten D, public and private streets in section twenty five dash five eighty three, special exceptions of the Bodatack County Code, and a commission permit for streets and utilities in accordance with section fifteen point two dash twenty two thirty two of the Code of Virginia and section twenty five five seventy six commission permit of the Bodatack County Code. And these properties are located at one oh three Murray Farm Road and frontage along Cloverdale Road, alternate two twenty and identified on the real property identification maps of Bodatack County as section one oh eight, partial one forty and section one oh eight parentheses ten, partial C and D. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, with the text amendments, the uh T and D ordinance requires a development plan and design guidelines. Uh, again, throughout my presentation, I'll refer to those as a master plan. Uh, the master plan for this particular community that you're going to hear about tonight has been uh titled Harvest at Blue Ridge. And this is the cover sheet from that that package, which is um has quite a few sheets in it. So the um the first sheet that that I want to point out is the development plan itself. So what this plan does is 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 the T and D do use district requires the detailed development plan and design guidelines that demonstrate that the proposed development will meet all the size and dimensional requirements found throughout that T and D ordinance. Uh, the T and D use district also stipulates that the master plan will become part of the zoning regulations governing the proposed development uh so that the uh the development is required to be designed and substantial uh in substantial conformity with the master plan as well as meet all the minimum regulations found throughout the zoning ordinance. Uh, this proposed development uh is located within an area that is designated on the future land use map as community mixed use, which is supportive of mid-sized shopping centers and mixed use developments such as the proposed development. Now, this particular uh sheet begins to lay out a color coded of the sections with throughout the community. Uh, the yellow is single family detached. It goes to single family attached duplexes, cottage lots, multifamily, the open space, um the commercial, the civic spaces and so forth. So as you'll see, when you begin to look at that map, the the colors, there's a lot of mixture of colors. Uh, the plan goes a really good, good uh approach to mixing in the single family uh detached with the attached and so on. Um, the green is the open space requirements uh that you'll see that scattered throughout the neighborhood and in proximity to most of the homes located in the neighborhood. Uh, the multifamily, for example, is not just bunched up like what you might see at the town center. Uh, it's smaller lots that will have more like a sixplex type unit instead of a large apartment complex. And those will be designed to blend in more with the single family, so those are kind of scattered throughout as well. The next page is a really important one in the document. Um, it has a table that'll go into a lot of the calculations uh to show that this particular uh development is proposed, meets all of the requirements and in the ordinance. Um, the overall plan will end up having one hundred and twenty-two proposed single family detached towns, twenty-four duplex units, thirty cottages, ninety-nine single family attached or townhome units, one hundred and sixty-two multifamily units for a total of four hundred and thirty-seven um residential units and sixty thousand square feet max on the commercial. Now, T and D's must contain a minimum of seventy-five acres and cannot be larger than three hundred acres in size. Uh, the Harvest at Blue Ridge contains um uh acres within within those. Acres within within those guidelines. TNDs must contain certain district areas that are designed designated as either core edge or workplace. Core and edge are areas are required in all TNDs by the ordinance, workplace is optional. Typically in core, you'll find a mixture of commercial and residential uses. In edge areas, you'll find more residential uses. Along the perimeters was where you typically find the edge, of course. And then in workplace is going to be more geared toward commercial and industrial uses. Now, this particular development does contain each of the three designated areas within its boundaries. Based on the acreage. The Harvest at Blue Ridge is required to have nine point one one five acres of open and civic space. So that would be a lot in the green areas, the dark green is open space. And the lighter green color is some of their designated civic areas. Again, they they're required at their acres to have at least nine, a little over nine acres of open and civic space. This particular plan is actually providing closer to sixteen acres, approximately sixteen acres, just a little bit shy. Fifteen point eight five acres of of open civic space. Which is approximately six and three quarter acres more open space than what would be required by the ordinance as amended. The table on this page contains all the required calculations that demonstrates. That the proposed development meets or exceeds ordinance requirements when it comes to open space. And other other areas throughout the ordinance. I want to go ahead and point out at this time that Dr. Ross with the schools has reviewed the proposed development. And reported that over the past several years that they have seen a minimum decline in the enrollment. The new students from this community would be served by the Cloverdale Elementary, Reed Middle School. And a Reed Mountain Middle School and Lower Bodatack High Schools. And he reported that only Reed Mountain Middle School would actually come closer to capacity with this development, but not go over capacity. But he felt like very confident that all the new students could be accommodated easily in the system. The next page in the master plan lays out the phasing of this particular development. It's being proposed in six different phases of development. And this sheet with the tables gives a breakdown. With each phase of how much commercial and residential would be in that phase. And again. All of these sheets within this plan would have to be substantially conformed to. When the technical plans came in, so there wouldn't be any any dramatic adjustments to any of those phasing. As far as the number of units and commercial that would go into the phases. So the next sheet begins to talk about those roads that came from that matrix or that table that you saw in the text amendments. I know it's a little hard to see here, this is a basically a copy of that that chart. It begins to lay out their roads, they'll have Neighborhood Center Boulevard. Neighborhood Center Avenue, mixed residential. Streets, residential alleys, pedestrian paths, and and then some private street. So the thoroughfare plan in the master plan does illustrate the different street types that will make up the street network of this proposed development. While the majority of the streets will be designed for VDOT standards and to the to be accepted by VDOT for future maintenance. The applicant is requesting an SEP request for some private streets and alleys. Now, when it comes to the private, there's one section here by some of the commercial. That would be private. Most of anything else that would be private would be a series of alleys. Again, most, most of those homes that would be up around the alleys will have frontage on a publicly maintained street, designed and maintained. But these little smaller alleys would be private. The Harvest at Blue Ridge will connect to Cloverdale Road at two points. The lower one across from Cortland. And then this upper access point, there's no no drive access there now. The twenty twenty one VDOT traffic data indicates that there will be that there's actually already eighteen thousand average annual daily trips along this section of Cloverdale Road. The applicant did was required to perform a traffic impact analysis, and that was done and completed by the applicant. That considered traffic along Cloverdale Road between its intersections with US four sixty through the intersection at East Park Drive. And based on the building out of the proposed development, all the all six phases of development. Study concluded that no improvements were needed at US four sixty intersection. Intersections with Kingsman Road, Carm Packer Drive, or Murray Farm Road. Which will not provide any access into the development itself. However, access to the proposed development across from Cortland Road. Will require a signal and reconfiguring of the crossover. And the northern access that would be constructed at build out or that phase would would simply be a ride in, ride out. VDOT has reviewed the traffic impact analysis and issued a conditional letter of concurrence with the conclusions of the TIA. The applicant has a. Is very well represented here tonight. I know there are traffic engineers here. So if you have any any specific standards when it comes to the TIA, he'll be very helpful in answering those. The next sheet deals with utilities, it's the conceptual water and sewer layout. And and this would just be the primary lines throughout the development. The the developer of the proposed. Project has has been working with the Water Authority for quite a while. Who has issued a letter indicating that both water and sewer can be made available to the development under certain conditions as outlined in their letter that they issued. There were actually two options listed on the sewer. The first of which would be to tie to sewer, which would require them to get an easement. To be able to tie into an existing manhole, and that particular manhole would actually go to a. I guess, an an area that could handle all the sewer initially right up front. The other option would be to tie the sewer, as the applicant is showing here, to an existing sewer line. By Cortler Road and Cloverdale Road. And this connection would not require. Additional easements, however, the capacity in the line needs additional capacity analysis for the full build out. The so the Water Authority will immediately allow phase one to proceed. But may require the developer to address capacity within the system improvements as a result of the analysis. Now, what they're really saying there is that they know they can serve it. But it may take some upgrades to a pump station. And and if that it comes back and the analysis shows that that's the case, then they will. More than likely require that developer participate in the cost of those upgrades to serve the community. The Water Authority is saying that water can be made available, but the developer will be required to participate in system upgrades. To the thirteen twenty nine pressure zone, which feeds this area. Water Authority is already undergoing capital improvements. Improve capacity in the area. The developer would be required to pay a prorate a share of those improvements based on their capacity needs. Versus the planned system capacity increases gained by the Water Authority capital improvements that are already underway. So the Water Authority is saying that certainly the entire community can be served. It will take a little closer look and. The developer may very well have to participate in some some improvements to to help facilitate that. The next sheet in the. Master plan that I wanted to point out just shows a lot of the different building types based on the standards in the TND ordinance. Get a little bit of illustration of how how the different building types layout on certain lots, whether it's a internal lot or a corner lot. So the next sheet actually is a thoroughfare standards and site section. So they begin to provide kind of to go along with the the street types. Some some actual cross sections of those. So this this site or sheet details the street and alley cross sections proposed for the Harvest at Blue Ridge. It does not include the primary access alley. As you know, when the board forwards the petition on to for text amendments. To the planning commission for consideration, that becomes the board's request at that point. So while we we heavily include the petitioner in in the drafting of that language. The primary access alley is something that staff. Proposed didn't necessarily originate from the petitioner. So at the point in time, they did not have that cross section when the plan was produced. And that's the reason it's not here, but their plan anytime that there was primary access alley. Would have to meet those minimum standards from that table in the TND ordinance, even though it's not shown in this particular page in the master plan. This is the point where I kind of already mentioned that Fire EMS has reviewed the proposed development. Specific, not just the text amendment, but the specific development. And they, while they initially indicated some concern with the size of the primary access alleyways. They've worked with the engineer, the engineers provided some AutoCAD auto turn type. Analysis. And and while the fire department. Feels a little better about that, they they still want to be very much involved, which they they generally would be. Engaged throughout any technical site plan process. And they will definitely ensure proper access and respect to fire and life safety throughout the development, including anything that would be. Served by one of these primary access alleyways. So along those same lines, the master plan does include the development development plan as well as the design guidelines. So I'm going to go through in the next couple of slides. Some representative elevations of what the architecture is proposed to look like. And this particular design guideline sheet, this begins to lay out wording for that for that look. And it begins to talk about things that you can't necessarily see in the pictures, which would be the types of building materials. For walls, for example, which would be. Stone, brick, stucco, wood clapboard, board and baton style construction, cement board. Typically, there's no vinyl or siding as a product, primary building material or anything like that being proposed on the homes. The language here goes into quite a bit of detail concerning the walls, different materials, the siding. The different articulation of the homes, foundations and so forth. Even on the openings, they they have language that will be controlling of windows and things of that nature. As well as other elements that will require porches and the types of railings and things of that nature. It goes on down through roofs, high standards and so on. So to get into some of the illustrations, the the master plan includes. Representative elevations for the different types of residential units. When it comes to the plan that kind of backs up closer to some of the adjacent single family residential. The master plan proposes the larger lots with more rural estates, which would be a little bit larger, single family detached homes. That would be more compatible to the neighbor, single family detached homes. Typical houses on lots might look something like the the homes you see here on this page. And again, this kind of goes back to some of the language as well, but quite the assortment, the houses are fairly are well articulated. Not not all just standard boxes. And again, some more house designs that might go on some of the narrower lots, two stories, a little bit narrower footprint. Houses where there there could potentially be a garage that's front loaded. We have some of those in some of the back areas of the Daleville Town Center. Duplex houses that would take on appearances of more of a single family home. But are designed as a duplex, that way when they're they're blending in throughout the neighborhood, they won't necessarily stand stand out as. Being something that looks a lot different. Still a lot of the same features that would show up on the duplex homes. The duplex homes could could be split by a party line down the middle and take home ownership. I know sometimes we think of duplex homes as being. Solely rental, one duplex on one lot. But in this particular case, we would anticipate a lot of those would be split down the middle and have the opportunity for ownership. The cottage, when you get into the little narrower. And small lots, the thousand square foot lots, again, a limited number in the core area to ten percent. Which which the table indicates that they would meet that, no more than that ten percent. These would be very small footprints in most cases and and. Probably a two story to to get a decent sized little home on those lots. And I think this gives you some more illustrations of the cottage loft type type units. As well as some of the townhome units, the way they would lay out and look. Point these out, multifamily buildings, again, maybe a six or eightplex type type building. There's no buildings being proposed like you would see at the Daleville Town Center where you have a lot of units under one roof. So these would be individual units that would have either six or eight or so number of units in them. They're they're going to look very much like a large home and they're blended throughout the community. So a little bit different aspect with this development than what you've seen at the town center. Some of the garages and accessory dwelling units that might be over in a garage. Commercial, there's building elevations that look more commercial, takes on a little bit more of. Older downtown, maybe like a thin castle perhaps, not quite as much taking on the franchisee looks. Even with some mixed use, we do allow dwelling mixed use within the. So buildings that might have commercial units on the bottom and all and put apartments above those. So the planning commission did hear this request and they voted unanimously, excuse me, they voted for oh. With Commissioner Lucas abstaining to recommend approval of the rezoning. And the SEP for the private roads, they also voted. To issue the commission permit, which would be for the the street infrastructure and the water and the sewer. There were six citizens that that provided public comment at the planning commission's public hearing. Three of those were noted as adjacent or joining property owners. Two of those were opposed and one was in favor of the request. There were two others that voiced opposition and one other in favor. And prior to the planning commission's public hearing, staff had received two favorable comments. Through our office. So the board there again is being requested to take separate action on the rezoning, the SEP for the private roads. And the. To either uphold or overturn the planning commission's issuance of the commission permit. The staff, excuse me, the applicant is very well represented. You probably get into a lot of technical questions that you may have, and they have. A presentation that they would like to to share with you, so I would ask whichever. Person is going to come down. Let me see if I can help them gear that up. Yeah, can you can you do it from there? Okay, cool.
Chairman, thank you. Again, my name is David Spiegel. And with my partner here, Dale Wilkinson, who lives at one eighty five Park Drive in Blue Ridge. We're really excited to to bring this to you. We've been working on it for about eighteen months. And tremendous amount of planning has has gone into it. It hasn't been been ten hours of review, but. A lot of a lot of thought and. Preparation, I guess, has gone into where we are today. So if I could just introduce the folks who may be speaking as part of the development team here. Dale, of course, and I have done some other projects together. We've been involved in the Stonegate subdivision off of Sanderson Drive. We've been involved in the Stonegate subdivision off of Sanderson Drive. We did the fire station number one in Roanoke City. Dale was instrumental in kind of pulling all that together. And we did the Summerfield subdivision out there on 604 as well, along with a few other, other projects. But I guess my point in saying that is we're both, I was going to say lifelong, that may not be strictly technically accurate, but for adult working lives, I think we've all both been residents here at Bodat County. We call Bodat at home. It's where we want to, where I want to die. So this, this, we feel like we are part of the community here and want to make this project a part of the community as well. We're not volume production builders. That's not just who we are. We're trying to do something the, the right way. And to have that take place, we did have some great folks on our team. First is Seth Wilkinson. He's Dale's son. He has an economics background and he really has been critical in kind of keeping us on track with a lot of the coordination of the process and the details of it. Two, we have a master planner by the name of Tom Lowe. And Tom is up here. Yeah, Tom's there. So Tom is based in Charlotte. He has done several hundred of these types of projects. He even wrote a book on light imprint development that's I think nationally recognized. And Tom has been key to really expanding our vision of what a good community looks like. Because we, we kind of know what we, what we are around and know what we, you know, what we see. Tom pushed those boundaries out to encompass really what you see before you today. And so he was a key, key part of everything that's going on here. Bobby Wampler with Engineering Concepts, also critical for what we're trying to do. Bobby was great in trying to work through these text amendments, which we appreciate y'all's approval of. And again, hundreds, hundreds of hours went into, and before I forget it, I do want to compliment the staff here. Some days we felt bad to prevail upon the planning staff with probably in their view stupid questions. But there was a lot of back and forth. We, we certainly in the text amendments did not get exactly what we were looking for. And I know the county, you know, shaped it in a way where they felt like it was in the best interest of the county. And those were dozens of meetings, hundreds of hours. So this is not something that's just all of a sudden kind of surfacing here at the, at the board of supervisors. The other key player is Grady Vaughn with Raimy Kemp. Raimy Kemp did the traffic impact analysis. They also did a signalization report. And they did another report that I, I can't really recall what the name of it was. But this was at VDOT's request to make sure everything checked out as far as VDOT was concerned. The Reed and Murray family, they have been super to work with. They have been extremely patient with us and we appreciate all their input into the project as well. So if I could, just a brief overview, it is a mixed use traditional neighborhood development. This is not an Ashley plantation. This is not a, a six or seven building, 16 unit apartment site. This is not what that is designed to be. It really is focused on having a neighborhood and a connected neighborhood. Two, to tie all of these small businesses and a, a really a range of housing designs to have a, a, the full spectrum really of, of housing choices for people. So our goal is to start off with younger couples where the guy's working out at Planet Greenfield and the wife is teaching school, or you got a sheriff's officer. And, and his wife has some job that they could come into the community, start maybe in an apartment, start maybe in a townhouse, but work on as they grow, growing them into this same community. So the, the sense of, it's overused and overworked and I apologize for saying it, but that sense of place is very, very important in what we're trying to accomplish. It is a traditional neighborhood development with a collection of all types of housing options and civic spaces. I think y'all know where it is. It's right there off 604 at the old Murray, Murray Sider plant. And interestingly, on our next slide, we wanted to make sure this was, this project would be consistent with what the goals the county has delineated are. And which is one of the reasons we, we continue to pursue this. On your comprehensive plan from 2010, this site was identified along with the Daleville Town Center, excuse me, and another site, very close to where we are, as the county's goal for where mixed use developments and community mixed use locations would be. So when we saw that, we thought that we were on the right track for fitting our goals consistently with, with what the county's goals were. So that was very encouraging to us. The other thing that was very helpful for us when we started to look at it and Tom started to get involved in all this, was the actual ordinance that the county has adopted in 25-201.1. And that Mr. Pearson touched on the purpose of the traditional neighborhood. Well, when we read this, this, we were struck by the fact this is exactly what we were trying to accomplish. I don't want to bore you, but the ordinance just says at the very beginning, "The purpose of the traditional neighborhood development district is to provide opportunities for the creation of new neighborhoods that have the desirable qualities of older neighborhoods that were the common form of development in the United States from early settlements until 1940s. These neighborhoods feature a mix of land uses and building types closely linked, and this struck us, by an interconnected network of streets that are framed by buildings, and this was the other part that hit us, and thus are comfortable for pedestrians and provide a sense of place." So that was in the ordinance that again was encouraging to us. The next slide kind of amplifies that. And again, all these purposes fit really with what, what air design is. Again, I would, I would submit to you. So back up one set, it was that, that one. So the purposes and the, and the, what we're trying to accomplish is allow residents to carry out many of life's activities within their neighborhood, shopping, education, working, recreation, yes. Provide a range, a range, range across the spectrum, a mix of retail office, et cetera, dwelling types. And this was important, provide a transportation system that provides safe, comfortable and convenient movement to, for all forms of traffic. And Tom Lowe has pounded on us the importance of having these streets designed. If you can see, it's not a grid layout. These streets are really kind of a spider web of streets. And the reason for that is that the, the streets are not built exclusively for vehicles. The, it's, it's got to have a pedestrian component to it and a, and a bicycle or I, I think of a lady out there walking her dog or hand walker or whatever. So it's got that pedestrian feel to it. And then the last one was providing a system of civic spaces, including park squares and public structures. And as Mr. Pearson pointed out, we, we went over board with the, these pocket parks that Dale's going to talk about in a minute and the green space. And we tried to lay those green space areas in, in, up beside Peachtree Valley to provide the type of buffer in, in response to the community issues that were raised and the charrettes that we, that we went through. The other slide that was important for us was the things that we were supposed to avoid. Again, Mr. Pearson showed this one to you, but I, I mean, again, it was kind of revelatory for me anyway, to see this, that the buildings are spaced far apart from each other. This is what we're trying to avoid. Building space far apart from each other and set far back from the streets and sidewalk. Parking lots located between the buildings and the street. Garages prominent at the fronts of dwellings. We want that, the, one of the big purposes of the alleys is to allow these rear loading access points for garages in the back. And there you see it, streets designed for high speed traffic. We're avoiding that, which makes pedestrian movement uncomfortable and unsafe. And these open spaces that are afterthoughts, I would, I would say that are leftover areas. No, what, what we are presenting to you is something that's designed, that has an intention framework with these, with these open spaces. So all of that again was, was very encouraging. Dale's going to talk about the process for just a, just a little bit and kind of the, the plan too. I, I, I would be remiss and Dale will talk about it better than I can, but we knocked on all the doors in the neighborhood there at Peachtree that abutted our property. I'm not saying we spoke with everyone, but we knocked on their door, tried to. And I just wanted to tell the supervisors, I think it's commendable from the discussions that we had with the, the folks out there. Because it was again, something encouraging to me because we hear a lot of things and you see a lot of things on social media that are uncivil and disrespectful and just not nice. And the conversations we had out there with them, not that everybody wanted to see it, they didn't. But the conversations that we had, we had discourse on it. We tried to take what their input was and incorporate it into our plans. I'm not sure anybody likes the idea of having a field that was in their backyard converted into somebody else's backyard. And I, I know, I, I know people don't like that. But again, I would suggest to you that the project that we've come up with takes every effort to mitigate those types of, of issues in, in large part due to the charrette. So I'm, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. You're good. I have a good partner. I'm so thankful for him. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. I've wanted to just take a moment and kind of discuss the extensive amount of planning and coordination that's gone into our proposal for Harvest. The Murray Sire property was listed for sale in March of 22. Just very quickly, David and I heard about the property. We began our own study of it. We contracted, we, we got it under control, if you will, with the, the Murrays. And then we began a period of exploration first by looking at the, the long-term plan. And then once we were seeing that there was something here that would work, we had extensive conversations with the planning department. And it wasn't fruitful. It was a T and D in the beginning was something that no one was all that familiar with and had been employed once. It was back in 2002 when it was put together and it, there were lessons to be learned and we wanted to know what those lessons were. Not only did we look at, at the Daleville Town Center, but we visited these kinds of projects throughout the country and tried to, tried to see what made these things not only successful, but made them at times slow to, slow to be accepted by the community. We, in July of 22, enlisted the help of Tom Lowe to assist in the neighborhood planning. Tom grew up in Roanoke. Coincidentally, he's been a neighborhood planner for 40 years. He, he's the guy that wrote the book. Honestly, this is the, this is the guy that understands T and D's. He understands the fact that these, these, these kinds of projects had been prevalent up to the 1940s. And then sort of the automobile took over and, and created some urban sprawl. And more importantly than the term urban sprawl, it got people away from each other. It got them onto one acre lots and it caused more traffic issues and just made getting along with your neighbor and your community more difficult to accomplish. Tom has been, has developed Kentlands in Gathersburg, Habersham and Beaufort, South Carolina. Highly successful projects, Carlton Landing in Oklahoma. Specialized in the public design charrette process. That's really what I want to talk to you about today. It's more about the charrette in a minute. At the end of, at the end of our charrette period up until the present day, we've been working on iterations of our plan based on conversations with the planning staff, fire and rescue, VDOT, Western Virginia Water Authority, stakeholders, neighbors. We've gone through, as I said, a number of iterations with this. Harvest is a culmination of long-term planning in Bodat County. We believe in especially thoughtful design guided by our neighbors, the county staff and experts in this field. These are just a couple of pictures of the charrettes, what are charrettes? I didn't know what a charrette was, but I learned quickly, I think we had nine of them. Very times of the day, tried to get as many people involved as we could. Sometimes we had three people and sometimes we had 20 people. It depended on the day, it depended on the topic, but we wanted the interaction. We wanted the input and that's, let me talk to you about the design charrette. It's a unique exercise for private development in Bodatot, certainly. Typically, neighbors and stakeholders hear about new developments after the design has already occurred. This makes it difficult for projects to respond and adapt to feedback. With our public design charrettes, we're able to bring the public into the room before and during the design and build the design around their feedback. We personally knocked on the doors, David said, of adjacent property owners, everyone in Peachtree. I can't say we talked to all of them. We tried. Some of them came to charrettes. We saw them there, went on site tours with county staff, businesses. Just a, a number of folks that participated in those hundreds and hundreds of people. Let's see, as I mentioned, where we've worked with the locality and VDOT since our design charrettes, the finalizers are designed, these discussions resulted in a, we think a finely tuned plan, respectful of the local planning and transportation needs. We've worked with county staff to create a series of text amendments, the ordinance, which enabled the design of Harvest at Blue Ridge and help code become in line with the, and thank you for authorizing the changes to the T and D. I'll, I won't say this too. You don't do a T and D in a month. You don't do it in six months. I can tell you with nine months of discussion with VDOT and the Western Virginia Water Authority and frankly, coming to terms with what the market in, in, in the Roanoke Valley and Bodatot specifically need, that's how this, this product was developed. And there, there, there have been, I've seen social comments out there where all we do is talk about the rosy things. There certainly have been people that have had problems with a number of issues regarding everything from which school folks would go to and the capacity at schools to stormwater issues. We're going to have a, hopefully one of the neighbors here tonight that, I'm reminded of what he said when he started, when he talked at the planning commission. He said, "I'm not opposed to this project, but..." And the "but" was important and it was Mr., I won't name him, but a gentleman here tonight. And he's a landowner adjacent. I talked to him after the planning commission meeting, I think last Friday. I wanted to touch base with him because he did have concerns about stormwater. And this, I think exemplifies our approach to this project. Also got him on the phone with our engineer, discussed stormwater issues that are really, these are all conceptual. You're going to see light imprint, green fingers in our, in our master plan that try not to change topography too much. Keep a lot of the homes centered or touching a park. 135 of our homes will touch a, a public park or, or alleyway that is designed for meeting your neighbors. And I think that's very unique for the area. But the, the, the stormwater issues are, are, as I explained to him, and, and after I listened to him, I might add, are, are, are design issues. And they go beyond where we are with this proposal. They're important. They're a neighbor and they're important and we respect that. And I can tell you that the stormwater plans, as the utilities and the roads and the rest are all governed by extensive regulation. And we will abide by all of the practices. And I think Bobby Wampler will attest to the fact that we're getting there. we're getting there. And what we offered to this particular gentleman was the, the opportunity to look at, uh, our plan before we actually make a submittal on the stormwater. So that, you know, his concern, I think maybe he can express it more himself, but was that he had a pond in back of his building and gosh, if that pond ever let loose, it, it'd create quite a, quite a problem for him. Happens to be a hillside. I, I don't think it'll be an issue. But the concern I want you to know is, is, uh, has, has been, uh, important to us. Couple of other things that came out of the planning commission that I want to bring to your attention is, uh, rightly someone said, well, what's going on with fire and rescue and, um, Bobby has actually modeled, modeled, uh, the largest tanker that was just purchased by Bodatot County or the fire, uh, department. And we, we put it on our alleys and roads to make sure that it could make those turns and, and adjust our roadways and our parking that will allow for what their, you know, chief Powell's, uh, uh, you know, purpose is, and that is to provide safety to the benefit, to the, to the residents of the county. The other thing that was brought up is our discussion with, uh, whether we had a discussion with the sheriff's department. And we hadn't. And so we did. And we talked to Sheriff Ward and, uh, I, uh, believe that he, uh, sees us as a project that will benefit Bodatot County. I'm happy to say that publicly. So, um, uh, so we've heard, uh, let's see, where am I at? Okay. Uh, VDOT, um, has been a constant contact with us. We, we, we'll, we'll say that differently. We've been in constant contact with VDOT. They're probably tired of us at this point, uh, but in our initial scoping meeting in September of last year, according to the criteria set forth by VDOT, we began a traffic study of that, uh, an extensive, expensive, uh, traffic study that really got into intricate detail about every road from 460 beyond us up to East Park Drive and probably I think it went up to Reed Mountain Road. It's a corridor for VDOT of extreme importance. They are spending a considerable amount of money in, uh, improving the intersection of 460 and 220 in the next decade. They prioritize through traffic. We will need to be making improvements, um, as we phase out this project. They're suggesting there may be a light that is required at Cortland at some point at the end of the project. Our endpoint on this is 2035. Uh, so we have time to make some adjustments and to keep the flow of traffic going. Through, we've gone through three iterations of this thing in three mon- in, uh, six months. We've, uh, arrived on a design which satisfies VDOT needs and we're very pleased to say we have a letter of concurrence of, I think a well-earned letter of concurrence. But we do think, certainly think, uh, VDOT for their input and the attention to detail on your behalf and that citizens' behalf here, um, in Bodatot. Let's see, Seth, where am I at? Uh, you're back. You're back on, David.
Okay. That, that there you can see, and I think Mr. Pearson kind of outlined this, uh, with the phasing uh, of it, the, the master plan, uh, well, that's not the phasing, but the master plan, livability, walkability and, and, uh, sustainability, uh, all, all those things are critical factors. Dale spoken about the feedback, uh, Tom Lowe talked about these feedback loops where we get input. And then we incorporate the input into the plan. There were nine days of these charrettes. And there was a break, several breaks actually, but a, uh, I think a full week break in the middle of them. So Tom could go back and, and, and kind of assimilate the things that, uh, we had learned. And the lessons learned from Daleville Town Center. Uh, the package, as Mr. Pearson indicated, meets the T and D, the range of housing opportunities, critical, critical, critical to what we're trying to do at full, full range.
There's a missing middle in housing in Bodatot. Developers have not been successful in being able to, other than big apartment complexes, to provide options for folks that are maybe at the lower end of the economic scale. We need to have those options and we need to integrate that in a way that the people who live there want to live there. They want to be part of the community and the other people that build a bigger house love that. The diversity is a, probably a, a word used too often, but it's, uh, we, we want to see that, I kind of diversity.
Connected.
It is, it is connected. Yep. So, let's see, um.
Sense of community. Yeah.
Where we answer.
Yeah.
The next one.
The, the interactions between.
I'd like to bring up the green space because I, it's worth noting this. This is a, a design of Tom Lowe and you see in front of you the lake that exists at Murray, that Murray Sider property right now. It's a naturally fed, uh, lake that they use for their cattle. We're going to make that a prominent feature with a bulkhead and, and actually making that, uh, uh, something that, uh, you know, the residents there can enjoy. There, there's the green slide right there. If you just go back one. Yeah. Th- these are green fingers. They all represent common areas and parks. And we didn't take this as an afterthought or a leftover site. We actually, um, looked at how we could have less of an impact on property. It's already beautiful and we want to reserve some of these areas for the common good of, of the, of the view shed. It's tremendous out there. It's beautiful. And these green fingers, uh, will also show how we're going to handle our stormwater. It's not a matter of pancaking a site. It's respecting the topography that's there and, uh, and minimizing frankly, it minimizes the pipe you gotta lay and the, the costs associated with it. And it creates natural areas that people want to be around. They want to walk around. They want to go to the park. They want to walk their dog. And these, these are, uh, they're significant, uh, part, a significant part of Harvest. We're rambling on a bit probably. Um, yeah, the neighborhood center, talking about that verse real quickly. That is the existing, uh, Murray, uh, cider operations, if you will, the, the old buildings. And we will take those buildings and we will make some improvements to them, but that will, that will, uh, become the, kind of the hub for the residents in the neighborhood with, uh, with some different uses, perhaps some small, uh, you know, uh, coffee shops and, and other areas. But we intend to leave what's there and just improve upon it. And we've been through the, you know, we've been through the improvement thing of old buildings. We have significant experience in doing that. It's not our first deal. We know what we're dealing with. We want to respect what's there. We want to use what's there. It's got a, it's got a good history. Uh, the, the Murrays and the Reeds are so well-respected in the community. We want, we want to, um, go further with that and, and keep that at the fore. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up was just pocket courts, these small little places, um, that, uh, will have cottages and they're in the core of the, of the T and D. Uh, they will allow for, um, much like Buchanan or South Roanoke, if you go through South Roanoke or Raleigh Court, it will allow for these, uh, smaller, uh, less expensive, uh, but still vitally important homes to be built that are all part of the overall, um, offering. And we do want to offer, uh, something for every price point that we can, uh, you know, you, you don't know what an apartment's going to be there. You know, it's tough to do it under a thousand bucks a month. It's a lot of money in my book for an apartment. But we're going to make these things look like homes and, uh, and that comes at, at some certain, uh, cost there. Uh, the range in price, uh, you know, will be from hopefully the couple hundred thousand dollar range upwards significantly to the estate lots on the, and the far east side as you're looking at this, the right-hand side. And those lots, uh, for your information, were developed to try to be, uh, compatible with the Peachtree Valley, uh, neighborhood. So we have, if you look at, you can see the number of parks and green space we have there. But, uh, the, the lots themselves, uh, they're water and they're, they're, we have water and sewer. The Peachtree Valley lots have, uh, septic and well. So there is a little bit of difference, but we've respected, uh, the neighbors that are there. Our project, uh, includes, uh, their, their thoughts and.
A lot of, a lot of green space there.
It is. Yes. So with that, I'm done. Uh, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Again, we, we have the, the engineers here for any technical issues that you might have a concern.
We, we have a level of detail on, uh, the schools. I didn't really address that. Let me do it. I think we have to rely upon the experts. I think Dr. Russ is an expert. When he says it's not going to have an impact, Cloverdale Elementary operates at 51% us, excuse me, 58% occupancy. And probably the trend is down. Uh, our, our project, uh, will have a minimal, uh, increase, uh, in, uh, in that occupancy. But, um, it will be a good thing. It'll be.
Hard to put a number on it because we don't know how many intra-county residents will be moving into it versus out-of-county res- it's hard, it's hard to quantify exactly what the effect would be, but Dr. Russ seemed to be comfortable.
Yes. If we can, I know that we've been sitting up for a period of time. I was wondering if we could just take a small five-minute, 10-minute break. Sure. Come back and get the other part of your design.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bless you. Mac, I got your signs up. Our fax handout.
They're rambling. I started ramping up.
Need some help. Come on.
Lord.
Presenting the ideas. It's kind of the catch term.
What I wondered was, how do you do that? Do you think? And that's maybe in your future business plan, but multiple. Multiple multifamily units dispersed. Under one manager, do you think, or one owner?
Yeah, we'll 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 own and and manage those apartments.
That right, yeah.
At least at least some of them, I mean, you know, some some somebody else may come home some too, but.
We we don't have any.
They would be sprinkled though within the development, so.
And and Mr. Pearson mentioned six to eight units. Actually, four packs, six packs and eight packs. And. You know, we still have to comply with all the regulations for a building permit and. The regulations on the sites so that everything complies with parking and the rest. The trick is to get. Kind of the parking off the road, maybe in back and not create huge parking areas. Make it make it a little bit more like a Raleigh Court or a South Roanoke.
My my final more prosaic question has to do with. Private streets, which I have an aversion to personally, based on bitter experience. So and yours are pretty minimal, you know, but you've got some. And. I don't know how that works even with the county. If is that bonded that you're going to be out there to 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 clear the snow? Before, at least when VDOT does and you know.
I'm sorry.
No, that.
Yeah, it's built into the declarations of the HOA, so. The homeowners association is designed to handle. All of the common areas, which would be the green space areas as well as signage, the landscaping up front. And the maintenance of the app. Yeah, but but the the primary reason for that again was to backload those lots.
Is why?
To backload those lots, so you're not looking at the house from the street and seeing a garage, right? Meeting you right there in front of the house.
Right, but they could be state, right? They could be state owned, couldn't they?
The alleys, I don't believe the design of the alleys is compatible with VDOT.
Okay, that's what I wondered. That that's probably.
Better, but. Yeah, I don't. I don't think the design is is something that VDOT would accept.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's that's all I have.
Um, yeah, so just a couple of things. Thank you for the thorough. Plan and presentation. In in looking at the elevations, the renderings for the houses and all the different types. I noticed a number of different architect names. And I was just curious, have you identified? A design firm that you're going to work with? Is there any consideration to? Keeping as much work local as possible? And there will there really be that many different designers or is this just a? A best guess compilation and and you'll delineate all that later.
So those are well-known architectural firms that do T and Ds, and I'd love to keep it all local. You know, I work with David Hill and David's good at these kind of things. Couple others that are into a more residential look of apartments and townhomes and. Storefronts, but we'd love to keep it local, but. Actually, these came at the recommendation, Mr. Lowe, who's worked with the same. Firms over the years, and so we will, you know, we're going, we're transitioning hopefully. To from this phase to a design phase. And. We're going to put as much work into the design phase as we are in this phase. So that we have a product that the market accepts.
Thank you.
And that fits our computer.
And that fits the concept plan that we've, you know, I mean.
That we have to say we're going to have to be in conformance with.
Yes.
And and just a broad question for you, we could probably speak here all night, so I won't ask for a lot of detail, but. You they they use the words light imprint development. As as you're an area that you have been very successful, can you define that a little bit for us and give us a? A a picture of what you mean when you use that term?
Sure. First chance I've had to speak here. Thank you. Well, compliment all these folks here for doing such an incredible job of presenting the ideas. We, and I, when I say we, a lot of the folks I've worked with over the years. Have always wanted to do not only a good job with the planning and the architecture. But also with the engineering and the infrastructure and and do it in a way that's sustainable and. And also respects the lay of the land, and so the term. Means light imprint means laying lightly on the land, and so we tend to really work with. You know, the contours and the topography and the natural drainage and accommodate. You can see by how organic this plan turned out. How interesting this property is. And when I was looking at the presentation, I said, gee, you know. If we could overlay these on a three dimensional map, you could see how that how that kind of eccentric. Organic look just beautifully fits on this property. As opposed like say just, you know, doing mass grading and that type of thing. So it's an approach that really works well with the smaller, more incremental. Type of development we're doing here because you can lay, you know, I would point to Finn Castle is an historic place that really worked with the contours, you know. Steps down the hillsides and so forth.
Yeah, thank you. I I would just wanted to hear what that meant to you, and then I guess that would. Lead into a question about stormwater, and I don't know who's gonna, if we're gonna get to that, I'm sure we'll get to that, so. Let's make sure we we talk about that with you, Mr. Ronkler, but I'll let someone else. Ask that question. What the last one I'll ask right now is, it's a staged project. We we talked about that. What is your timetable? Like, what do you see happening when? If they, I know we can't predict the future in the housing market and you're the economist, but. What in best best case scenario and worst case scenario, what's your timetable?
Well, trailer and molder might have a different idea. They, I think they at Daleville Town Center had a more aggressive approach. We look at this as a six-phase project, probably going through two thousand thirty-five or up to two thousand thirty-five. That's good and bad. It it allows it to grow to itself and and and. Uh, you know, it mitigates our risk and and how we. You know, the the funds that are expended, we we want to make sure the market is. Accepting the offering that we have, so it it'll be over the course of six phases, but. You know, if things go great, hopefully, the market doesn't fall apart and, you know, it's kind of happened in two thousand eight. We're more optimistic about it and think that there's a pretty deep market in Badatot for the offering that we have. So to answer that, design, six months. And and we're going to be, the first thing we're going to do is put a row of trees down the Peachtree Valley side. From our property to so that we can respect what the neighbor, that'll be our first point of construction. We're doing landscaping along.
Thank you.
Any smart?
No, I've I was at the planning commission. I went through this before, but I've asked him the questions that I had, so I'm fine with it.
So, yeah, thank you. So just interesting in your community meetings, what if you had to pick? The top three things you heard when you talked to the neighbors and the people in the community, what would you say they were? Let me accentuate the positive. People are happy that they don't all have to go into Roanoke for everything, and there. People that are saying, finally, where where you been? Thank you for coming. Thank you for taking the time to do it. We're happy about that. On the, you know. On the downside, schools, the occupancy, I think people, we weren't clear. With this, with this, we weren't clear that the schools, the elementary school would be Cloverdale, and there I think there is an issue at Colonial. on, uh, reaching occupancy. So schools came up. Um, Stormwater is, was just brought up at the last meeting. It, it is easily answered by the fact we have not done that yet, but our intention is so. Anybody else? Can you think of other?
The traffic.
Oh yeah, tra- traffic, yeah, absolutely traffic. Everyone's concerned.
So, so you talk about lessons learned, you know, and what, what would you say the biggest lesson learned in the previous neighborhood development here in Bodata?
I don't want to speak ill of Daleville Town Center, but it's a, a small detail of the dri- the driveways in the back of the homes. They're, they're not six feet or over eighteen feet. There's something in the middle. So what you're left with is cars that want to pass on that road. They want to park on that road and pass on that.
Streets.
And, and on the street, and you, you really need to have it short enough that people put their car in the garage or long enough that it can accommodate the vehicle.
Yeah, I think it's important to, you know, to learn from experiences. And then of course you guys would custom build. Is that kind of how this would go, the custom build homes and or sell lots or some of both?
Yeah, I, I would say some of both.
Yeah.
We're, we're, you know, we would have to partner with a builder.
And then.
We would have to partner with, with someone that we trusted and someone that would, uh, spec out the type of house that conforms with the plan we've submitted.
Right.
And Mr. Pearson actually has to review the blueprints on, on each house, as I understand it, to make sure.
And that's why we let, put a variety of articulation in the porches and roof lines so that we have some, um, interest that we, you know, people, it can look different. They're, all the homes are.
So the phases, you talk about maybe six phases. Would you have kind of all housing types in each phase?
Yeah. Yeah, that, that was, uh, touched on by Mr. Pearson, but kind of have to comply with the mix that you put forward. Not that all, I don't think it all has to be developed, but the mix has to, you have to maintain those ratios.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Yes.
One of the things that, um, I have a question for, it just happened, um, by chance, is one of my patients today. He has what we call Kern Sayers. Kern Sayers is a disease that destroys the mitochondria, it gets destroyed. So you have loss of muscle, you have loss of anything in the body. So the question was, the patient's mother was asking about this project. I let her know where, what it is, how to get to it. But she asked, is it ADA compliant? And because they can't have steps.
Yeah, but it is ADA compliant. It's coincidental, perhaps. We've actually had a request from a group that is handling, uh, that is, uh, the focus for their children that are ADA requiring, uh, their special needs. And they got ahold of us last week, knowing that what had occurred at the planning commission and that we want to be responsive to needs in the community. And then we're meeting with them in order to, Bodata people, I might add, that, uh, to, to think through these very issues of how a community can organically comply with special need requirements. So to answer your question, I don't think we'd be required for ADA in every house. I don't, I don't really know the rules, but I can tell you our intent would be to expand our market as much as we can, including being respectful of people that have special needs.
Thank you. Next question is some of the things that, um, are going on, like say if you have an event there and you have an enormous amount of people, and I know I spoke to you this before, but I, I want everybody to hear this as well. But, um, if we have an event and we have a lot of people coming there, will that area handle the traffic patterns and the traffic and parking? And I know we're going in different phases, and I know that phase six will give that opportunity for those individuals. But beforehand, do we have that parking availability?
We've got, I'll jump in. We got an eighty-nine, not shy. So we, we, we have a lot of acreage that's going to be dedicated to public space, but we're not going to have four thousand person events and a Hampton Inn sitting in the middle of it.
Right.
And, and, uh, uh, no, we, we won't be able to handle, uh, thousands of people coming onto the site at once. Yeah, we will, but we will comply with all parking requirements that the planning and zoning folks would have. But it, it's really not set up at the end to accommodate huge events.
Okay.
It's not the purpose of what it is.
Exactly. That's, that's the basic thing. It's not the purpose of that. The, the, the other thing that I want to mention is schools. Um, certainly we're going to have an increase in amount of children, um, that need to have to go to a school. The capacity may be increasing, but if you've seen that Dr. Russ has had out there, shown, there's been a lower amount of patients enrolling or patients, students. Um, so it, as you look at that, what is the, is there idea about the number of children that would be set up for these schools?
But yeah, again.
It's, it's hard, it's hard to even.
Very difficult to quantify that. We've looked at that. The engineers looked at that and there were some tables that give you guidelines, but just as far as, you know, uh, knowing that we're going to have young couples, knowing that we're going to have older folks, and then trying to identify, because I think a lot of Bodata people would be attracted to this. How many people are already in school? They're just moving to this neighborhood. It's, it's, it's hard to quantify that. And I, I don't have a good answer. I don't know.
And, and I don't know if I'm, I know it's going to hit some, but I just didn't know if there's a number that, from all the analytics that you guys take a look at, there's a number that popped out of there.
Every form of housing, we, we have looked at this, every type of housing, whether it's a cottage or a multifamily unit, or a single family detached, or a single family attached, or a, you know, a ACU unit, uh, have suggestions as to what each of those markets produce in terms of children in the school system. Generally speaking, uh, it's about three homes produce, or one child for every, uh, in the school system for three homes, three to four homes. And, and we, you know, we can see that, but the important thing to note on that is this is over six phases that this would occur. If you look at the, and, and and again, we rely upon the expert. Dr. Ross knows what he's doing. And I, I think he would not be shy to speak up and say, there's a capacity issue that you guys got to address. The other thing is you have the, you know, give credit to the schools. There's time to adjust. It's not all the kids at once, and it's all over a twelve grade or thirteen uh, grade system. So if you had whatever number of kids, the, the, they're going to be divided up into different classes.
Great, great answer. Thank you very much. Now, um, comes a stormwater.
What I may end up doing is, is asking, uh, Mr. Clark, because I know he has a lot of information that he would like to, to know. And what I want to do is have his questions kind of come back and answer that, if that's all right. So what I'll do is open up the public unless anybody asks any other questions. Okay, so go ahead. I'll, I'll open up the public and then come back. Thank you for your patience. Uh, audience, thank you so much for your patience, though, this whole thing. So what I'll do is open a public hearing. And Mr. Clark, I will have you come down first, if that's all right. Or go right over to a microphone right over there. Perfect.
Maybe hard for me to get back. So, um, he talks about twenty thirty-five. Excuse me, I'm Ed Clark. And the property I own is my office at fifty-three fifty-two Cloverdale Road in Roanoke, which is just in front of their project. I live at fifty-five oh six Moore Auger Road, which is right on the edge of Bodata. So I met with Mr. Wilkinson this morning. A nice gentleman. He, he was, he was very pleased to do what he could to help me. I, I'm, I'm not crazy enough to know that there are sometimes things that, that you, that you can't do anything about. And this may be one of, I honestly feel like a big old black fly swarming around in a bunch of buttermilk in here. So it's just, it's not a good place to be. But anyway, um, right behind my office is a field. In that field, in one of the maps there, they indicated that was a pond there or retention pond there. If you build a retention pond there, uh, two things. One is, uh, if you get another rain that lasts a while, like we had a while ago, that pond would probably overflow. And if it does, I'm going to need water wings because I don't swim. Um, it'll wash that house down in the highway. Um, and that's an exaggeration. The other thing is if I go to sell that and win, and if I do, and I carry somebody to look at it and they look up behind here and here's this pond at the level of my roof, that's not a very good sales, uh, assistance. I mean, that would kind of turn a lot of people off. And it wouldn't have to be a pond with, uh, water in it because I, I noticed they talked about a dry retention pond. That pond is put there to hold water. And at some point in time, people are not crazy enough to know that some point in time that's going to fill up with water and it may run off, but it's going to fill up. Certainly it'll affect the value of my property. That's the first thing. And, and I guess the other thing is, uh, just being afraid that it'll flood me out at some point. We've had some pretty bad rains in recent times. Climate's changing and I'm not a climate change person, but I see a lot of things happening like this last, uh, few weeks and, you mean, I think that's basically it. Um, I think Mr. Wilkinson and his people will do what they can. And I'm not dumb enough to think that that's not something that couldn't happen, that they can't do anything about it. It is, then that's just my, my plight in life, I guess. But I'm asking you as the board that when the time comes, just do what you can to protect me. I'm not looking to harm anybody. And this is something that's really needed. You know, the, the, the multiple listing used to have fourteen, fifteen hundred listings in it at times. They're down to about four or five hundred now. So we are about a half to a third of available properties in this valley is what we used to have. So this is something that's really needed and it's going to be a nice project and it's in a beautiful place. So you know, to go, well, I think it's something everybody can be proud of. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Appreciate it. Terry Broccoli?
Um, my address is seven nine seven Ray Street. I live in Laurel Ridge, which is Cortland is my main road to come out. And my concern that I have is Fraylin is building a development with apartments and townhouses on Hunt Ridge. So we don't know how many apartments are going to be there. And we don't know how many townhouses are going to be there. So all of the people that are in that area, they have to go down Cortland. So now the development at the Murray Farm, there's four hundred and something houses or whatever, two people per house. That's eight, that's another thousand people. So I'm sure the people on Hunt Ridge is at least a thousand. That's two thousand more people. And I'm not sure that the Murray Farm put into play of how many people will be coming down from that area from Roanoke County. And I know it borders the Bodata County line, but, but that's definitely one of my concerns. And the other concern that I have is that we are in desperate need of single family homes in Bodata and have been for a very long time. So I welcome that this project and I'm super excited that it's not a Fraylin project. Okay, super, super excited about that. But I would like to see, um, the county maybe get a little and give a little, like maybe we can go with the single family. I don't know what happened here. I, maybe we can go with the single family homes and the cottages because I think that the cottages are very well, um, received for the elderly people living with their families and what have you. So I'm all for that. I'm just not getting it with the six and the eightplex apartments. Let's call them what they are. I mean, they might not look like the Daleville Commons Apartments and all of that. But Bodata is getting their fair share of apartments. Do we really need to have more apartments at this development? And I would love to see more of an active community. I know you, I think you didn't talk about it and I didn't get to see the plan, but it sounds like there's going to be walking trails there, which is wonderful. Because people do like to get outside and do that kind of thing. But it would be also nice to have like pickleball courts and like, there's no senior fifty-five plus community around here where, and a senior can be active. And I would like to see more of that in this development. There's plenty of apartments for the younger people. But that's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Dale, you put this, this up. You, would, would you like to speak? Okay. Green? Okay. Danny Goode?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak. My name's Danny Goode. I reside at forty-seven sixty-six Reed Mountain Road. I've got a couple of questions. And one of them's a little bit of a duplicate that was, uh, just mentioned. And that's regarding the traffic study. The traffic study goes back to East Park development. And up from that, about two hundred yards is Hillview Drive coming out onto, uh, two twenty alternate. Uh, the only place really that you can get out of that entire subdivision, if you will, if you include Roanoke County, is, um, to either come out Hillview where there's no sign, you've got a fairly steep grade coming down through there. And then you have to make a quick stop at a little bit of a downslope in the median to be able to come across there. And you've got sort of the same thing, um, you know, over on the Roanoke side on four sixty. Uh, there's no light getting out there. And really the only way for you to get a light uh, coming out of that entire subdivision, uh, or entire development uh, is to snake around. Uh, I think the street name is maybe Rome Drive and then make your way down close to the Walmart entrance. It's a very, um, very difficult place to get out of, not hard to get in, but difficult to get out of. And, uh, I'm very concerned about, you know, the safety of those who are trying to get through that area. Also, on two twenty alternate there, uh, I'm not sure where all the drainage problems are on two twenty alternate, but it is a very easy road to hydroplane on. Uh, I drove through there one day when the, uh, fire department was, I guess, testing their pumps or something. And there was none, it was dry that day. The sun was shining and I hydroplaned going across in front of the East Park. And so I'm not exactly sure what's going on there that creates such a hazard, but, um, it is uh, a problem, uh, particularly with, uh, when there's heavy rain, uh, just maneuvering through there all the way up really from four sixty, uh, probably to past Hillview there. The second, uh, issue that I wanted to mention was the pond and the runoff from that. I really haven't heard anything, uh, about the details of the pond. And I haven't heard about its size and what modifications will have to be done to it, uh, what the, uh, width of the dam is, what the, uh, thickness of the dam is, and also, um, how much of a buffer you have between full pond and overflow. I know there's been a lot of problems with the dam there in Rainbow Forest over the years. And, uh, I think this is something that, that does need to be addressed before, um, And, uh, I think this is something that, that does need to be addressed before, um, you know, you get too far into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Scott McLucius, uh, he sent me a text message. He was in full support. Certainly had an opportunity to talk to you all and he wanted to thank you. The next is Don Obenchain.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I think we're all in favor of development, but we're not in favor of irresponsible development. But I would say this project looks like it's well-designed, well-planned, and should be, uh, well-received. However, and it's not just this particular project, but in the past, when we've had developments and they're completed, developer has left, the taxpayers seem to always be held accountable for any upgrades, um, to infrastructure. And it comes out of their pocket. My issue and what I asked the board to do is when you're looking and evaluating these projects, take that in consideration so that when the project's complete, there are funds available to take care of any infrastructure improvements and not leave that for our taxpayers to have to pay. Thank you.
Christine Cunningham?
Hello, um, members of the board. I am Christie Cunningham Taylor, speaking for Catherine Murray. One of the Murray Sider Farm, uh, the family members. This is a very emotional time for her, um, and her mother, and she has typed up a letter for me to read. My parents have lived and built their house on Murray Farm Road over forty-five years ago. My father was Robert Murray shareholder and president of Murray Sider Company. Since my father's passing in October of twenty twenty-one, his shares immediately were transferred to my mother Janet Murray, who is not in good health, um, which Catherine is her power of attorney and her primary caregiver, as she was for her father. As an only child, if her mother should pass before the land deal is done, uh, her parents will, shares will then become her shares. Before the land was listed for sale, her cousin Anne was contacted about it being bought for this master plan. While her and her mother totally agree that the property needs to be sold, since it is not able to be utilized as a farm any longer, it should be and needs to have something amazing done with it to enhance Borotot County. They do not believe that four hundred houses is the best interest for this property. They also feel as though there can be better communication and thought into who should buy the property and what can and should be done with it to make the county the best it can be. They feel strongly that this is not the master plan. She has personally lived on the farm for forty-one years and she would hate to see hundreds of homes go up on the property. Regardless of the size of the home or the footprint they create, she feels that all options that could be looked into should be looked into, not just to make this one decision based on all the information that's been presented. For this to be as profitable as it can be, and it hasn't been by the looks of things. Again, she doesn't feel that changing the TND and stuffing four hundred small homes into under a hundred acres regardless of the footprint is the answer, since that is what the focus seems to be on. She deals with hundreds of people in her business and socially that are also residents of Borotot County and Roanoke County. So she feels she is not by far alone in feeling this way about the community. People want to move to Borotot County for the land, not for cramped, small neighborhoods with houses built on top of each other like Southeast Roanoke, that these are just going to be more expensive. The community is a great vision, but reality is often nine times out of ten, it's completely different than what you put on paper. Since this will affect her and her family and they essentially own two homes on Murray Farm Road, two seventy-three and two seventy-seven, this is very, very bothersome to her. As the four Murray shareholders have all aged and are all in poor health at this time, she is not sure that the family is being protected or represented by competent representation. She is fully vested in the family and currently has four generations living on Murray Farm Road. Um, simple things have not been clarified, such as where will their trash go? Because they currently use the Murray Sider Farm dumpsters. Um, how will they access their homes? Because the personal driveway that's on this property is what they're speaking of changing. How close will this be to her front door? And will her son and grandson be able to continue to play ball outside safely while this is being built? How will she get her mother in and out to doctor's appointments? And in the event of an emergency, how can rescue personnel get to her? She personally, she herself personally is looking to seek legal representation for this matter because she wants the best for all as a family as well as the surrounding community. She feels like due diligence is not being performed to protect all parties and it desperately needs to be done to protect not only the family, but the land in Borotot County as well. She's open to information, guidance or input in general from this development for moving forward because she feels her family and some of the shareholders have essentially been.
Thank you. So. Grant Holmes?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you to the board. My name is Grant Holmes. I live at one sixty-four Murray Farm Road. Uh, believe it or not, it was almost exactly four years ago that, uh, I came before this, uh, committee to talk about the new job I had at the Chamber of Commerce. So it's amazing how things have looked. Just after that, I purchased this property on Murray Farm Road. And I have lived there now for, uh, almost four years and have loved it. Um, last year I was sitting out on my back porch and, uh, these two guys pulled up and, uh, it was Dale and, uh, Mr. Spiegel. And they wanted to know how I felt about what they were doing. And since that moment, they have been accessible through the charrette process last year. They explained things well. They answered questions. They came back with answers when they didn't know and they were willing to say that. So it, when I've been involved in this, I've been involved in many of the charrettes, many of the meetings, uh, the supervisors meeting last week for the commissioners. Throughout the entire process, they have been diligent. They have been careful. They have been kind. They have been gentlemen. And, uh, I see the total opposite of what was just represented. I see an amazing community that reminds me of where I grew up, where I could run down the street on my bike and buy a loaf of bread. Um, the allotment that I lived in when I was a boy was more like an Excel spreadsheet, both in its flatness in columns and rows. And we don't see that happening in this allotment. And I think the way the roads are designed, uh, a friend of mine said, well, isn't, isn't that going to be problematic? And I said, no, it's going to slow things down and make things more of a community. So I see that's what they're trying to accomplish here and I'm wholly behind it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that was, Ted, is there anybody else like to speak? If not, um, I'd ask that the, you guys come back up and see if you can answer some of these questions that may have, uh. And I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you.
Chairman, we'll try to just, uh, briefly address, uh, some of the comments that were made. I'm going to let Mr. Walter speak to the stormwater management issue. He's, uh, much, much, uh, more knowledgeable than I'll ever be about it. As far as Ms. Bruffman's concerned, I, I wasn't sure whether Ms. Bruffman was a Borotot County resident or not. I, I thought I heard Ray Street, but, uh, I may be mistaken. In any event, she suggested that there is the need for single family, uh, houses and cottages. And of course, we're trying to accomplish something broader than that, again, to capture that full spectrum of missing middle, as Dale said, uh, here with the, with the project. Mr. Go talked about Hillview and hydroplaning on six oh four. I can't really speak to that. I can speak to the fact that we had a five hundred page traffic study, uh, plus additional reports. And VDOT has issued their letter of concurrence. It, it's hard to say that we should be responsible for what goes on at Hillview or what goes on at six oh four with hydroplaning. I, I'm not, I'm not exactly following, uh, that part of it. He did have a, a, a good, uh, issue raised about the pond. We do intend to create a bulwark around that. It is a, um, farm pond. It's not the, uh, uh, lake out at Rainbow Forest. That, that, uh, some of you have seen it, know what I'm talking about. I don't know the size of it, but it's, it's, it's a farm, it's a farm pond. So, uh, the volume of water there is, uh, not like what we're talking about at, uh, Rainbow Forest at all. And it really is just a, a, a depression in the ground, a sinkhole, I guess it was. So there's no dam per se around it, just the, just the, the bowl there. Mr. Obenchain talked about, uh, developers leaving. That's not who we are. We're residents here. We intend to stay here and, uh, back these things up with, uh, air reputations anyway, for what that's worth. The, uh, he's, he's quite right though about the, uh, additional, uh, safeguards for stormwater management and for the roads. And they are bonded as part, again, of the design process. VDOT will issue, uh, uh, the requirements for the bond on the road so that there's a, uh, corporate surety backing up the, the ability to install the road. And the same thing would go with the stormwater management. I, I think that's regulated by the county as well as DEQ. There's a bonding process for that to make sure the thing is constructed and works in an appropriate, uh, appropriate way. So, uh, Ms. Cunningham, we, I mean, we have, we have a contract with Murray Sider that, uh, Murray Sider Company has, uh, signed off on and I, I think that speaks for itself. But I would ask Mr. Walter to talk a little bit about stormwater, unless you have anything else there.
Maybe need Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, on stormwater management. Um, we'll obviously have the key answer that's kind of been alluded to already in that. It's a highly regulated part of site development. There will be a full technical site plan review process that's required. Um, stormwater management regulations have changed a lot over the past twenty years and possibly through this design process, it will change again. And usually that's for the more restrictive nature of improvements. Um, what I would add that would maybe be a little less typical of our normal projects is there are a few locations on the concept plant that are shown as quote unquote stormwater management ponds, one of which, uh, is above Mr. Clark's house. Um, that's really just the result of a conceptual plan. There's no details associated with that. But I will refer to what Mr. Lowe spoke to before about his light imprint. And much like he challenged the planner, the Dale and David about the type of development, he also is going to challenge the stormwater management norms. So where we may typically do a, you know, curb inlets and drop inlets and pipes and big ponds at the lower end of the, of the, um, property, um, that is not what's planned with the light imprint. A, a lot of the design standards that are incorporated in this project are intended to be more open channels, uh, try to use natural drainage ways, um, which lends itself for us to address stormwater management throughout the development. So there may, in the pocket park, there may be a small depression. Again, we've done no details. There could be small depressions throughout the development, wider channels that can detain water as it is conveyed through the site, which will reduce the need for large stormwater management basins. Um, regardless of that, we do still have to meet the regulations. So from a, um, Virginia State Code standpoint, we have to address channel protection. And through that means right off the bat, we have to reduce pre-existing flows from the site already by twenty percent right off the top. And then we have to look at the volume of water that's generated from the development. And whatever increase of that is, we're doing the inverse of that. So if, if we're doubling the amount of water coming off of the site, we actually have to reduce that flow again by another fifty percent. So the regulations for channel protection, um, have progressed a lot even since we're talking about the town center. Um, that has just progressed recently for even further protection. And then in addition to channel protection, we have flood protection. So that would get into your larger storm events, um, that have to have adequate channels that have to go through a review process, not only by Borotot County. VDOT will also look at the drainage within their roadways to address things like hydroplaning and whatnot. So I'm getting no, no technical specific details in place yet, but we have to go through a full process, uh, to address that.
Thank you.
Just, just for curiosity, that twenty percent reduction in, in off-site flow, when did that come into effect?
Uh, it's the energy balance equation. So you look at the, the pre-development flow rate. Um, and then that's, you have to reduce your post by twenty percent. It's an eighty percent of the pre and then the inverse of the volume of the runoff is your further reduction. So. Oh, I'm sorry, when it was?
When, yeah.
Up twenty sixteen?
Okay.
Any other questions from board members?
I, I, I would like to just ask the traffic folks, um, just sorry to make you walk down, but I just want to make sure our citizen comments are addressed thoroughly. Um, we had two regarding traffic. Um, when you did this study, did you consider the traffic at, at Hunt Ridge, the other development that was mentioned? Um, is, is an impact to this or can you just give us a little detail on that?
Sure.
How this fits into the overall picture?
Yep. So, uh, we, we complete our future traffic analysis based on a series of forecasting methods. I'm sorry. Um, there are scopes specifically with the Virginia Department of Trap, uh, Transportation prior to us completing the study. And what that is based on is we go out and actually field collect existing traffic counts. So that reflects the number of vehicles on the roadway. And then that traffic volume is grown by one percent per year to the anticipated build out of the project. And then we came up with tris, trip generation estimates for our proposal to, to isolate our impact on the site. Um, so we, we didn't generate trips for any other specific development, I guess, per se. But we do account for any sort of background growth through that, um, regional growth rate and any.
Is that the one percent?
Sorry.
That's the one percent that you're talking about?
Which count, compounds annually for the, uh, ten or fifteen or so years to the full build out analysis.
So your analysis didn't take into account any other developments that are coming, but you do build in one percent compounded every year to think about growth?
Right.
Okay. Um, and then I guess, and VDOT is here as well, just to, to reiterate what you just said about, um, the, um, ponding perhaps on six oh four. Again, it's not directly related to this project, but as you were doing your analysis or anything that, that VDOT has seen, does, does any of that cause you any, any har, uh, uh, any harm? Do you feel like that's going to be problematic?
Um, so, so our study and our coordination with VDOT is specifically, uh, designed to review roadway capacity, which I think is separate from the, the water issue. Um, so that, that doesn't come up in our study. I guess one, one relevant item though, is that our, our study did conclude that our, we isolate our site's trip generation as part of our analysis. And our site specifically would not have any impact on the volumes of the mainline roads. Um, is it allowing us to focus on our site access and that kind of thing? But so the, the condition would seemingly be consistent with what's out there today.
So this wouldn't change. Thank you. Any questions?
The other, good. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. All right. So what we're, we're looking at here is we have three items that we need to vote on versus our TND rezoning. I would ask, uh, I will make a motion on that. To approve?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Was there any discussion on that? Private Streets, uh, special exception permit? I'll make a motion to approve?
Second?
Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the commission permits? I'll make a motion approval?
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that concludes, uh, this public hearing. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Okay. All right, we are adjourned back in the thirty-first of July.